Good evening. It is Wednesday, June 7th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. This is a regular school board meeting of the GOCS School Board. We are meeting at the GOCS Public School Central Office Conference Room and via Zoom. Board members Neil, Dave, Nagel, and Heimbuck are present. Board member Thorpe is en route shortly. He'll be joining us a bit late. But we do have a forum, so I'll call the meeting to order and we will stay on the grid.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the agenda before you. We have one item to delete, and that is item C4, consolidated application, which is must be filed with the state by June 30th, but it's not possible to do so yet. So we will take that up at our second meeting on the 18th. Also, under C, we will add item 13, election board member pay. We failed to decide how much we would pay them, and they were gracious enough to work. So we decided we should pay them. Take that up on your business. Are there any other fractions or additions to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve? So Nagel moves to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Or Heimbuck seconds? Any discussion? I would just note that we have a couple of relatively lengthy presentations, and so we may take a short break at some point. And also that I may want to move the Hall of Fame induction approval a little bit earlier in the meeting, so be prepared for that. Is there any other discussion? If you're none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes and the agenda is approved. Welcome, all visitors. We have our ICS gentleman here again today. We have our auditor Dan Jolson and a board member-elect Ryan Sayer has joined us. And thank you for coming and congratulations and thank you for your willingness to serve. And we also have Dave Earland here as well as business manager Johnson and superintendent himself. No one has joined us online, so welcome and thank you for being here. Items on the consent agenda are the approval of the regular main meeting, May 9th, May 11th and 19th special. Oh, welcome. Robert Thorpe has joined us at 6:33. Pretty good timing. And two special meeting minutes, and those again were to approve the negotiated agreement and to approve the administrative and classified compensation proposal, and also the superintendent's report. Those were all in our packets. Anything in particular you want to highlight on your report?
I just had a mistake on the data. I started board meeting on July 19th. Would be mostly financial, but it's July 19th. And I hope you guys get to see the gardening projects out there in front of you. They're out there watering them, and it was just they came up with all of it. They planned it. They made a proposal. Now they want to fix the planters for next year, so. Yeah, very like rave that stick rave.
We should put some publicity out about that, so the community knows what's going on.
Yes.
All right. Anything else on the consent agenda that anybody wants to pull off? Or if not, is there a motion? What would the motion say? Move a move to approve items A through C and accept item D on the consent agenda. Heimbuck moves. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. I am aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Okay, so now we have the student achievement section of our meeting. Superintendent Self, you should take us through this.
Okay, so item A is the NDSA final results. And I kind of explained that in my guidance to you that I'm looking at the goals that you had set, that we surpassed our math goal. We missed our ELA goal by about 4%, which is probably only about one child in the third grade. We've already met. Plans are being made. So I mean, we already know the things that we need to do. We've looked, torn up the scores, taken them down, you know, to look, see like where's where are areas that we need to work on, focusing on the writing piece of it and making sure. So we're going to be reading on paragraph frames. So we've been already talking about that, what we need to do in order to move forward. But hopefully the information on the NDSA reports was informative. And if you ever have any questions about it, just ask. But when they post our scores on the insights, I don't know what's going to happen for our school making making the games, not the games, but meeting the benchmarks for the state, because we have so many parents that fill that parent directives in age grade that we may not meet our participation. So I don't know what's going to be the penalty from the state. We did not meet that benchmark. You have to have about 95% of your kids in the parental directives. Even though we have no choice in the matter, they count against us. So the parents start pulling their kids out of the NDSA testing. It affects our school in a negative way. So I guess we'll see what happens when that's posted and find out what ended up happening on NDA insights.
Any questions or anything on the NDSA? So even though our goals that we have listed are certain grade levels, half, nine, 30, ELA, we would, the reports we have here are all grades. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. Yep. And so if you remember when we met together at Legendary, we, you know, picked up those grades that we wanted to do, and those are our benchmarks. Now, next year, we'll dig down deeper and we'll go to each grade, what we expect for it. I imagine it's going to stay the same, because as we've been talking, we've been saying that why should we not have the same for all the grades? So this.
So you said we exceeded our benchmark for 10th grade, which was only 20%.
So that's. Your answer was a little bar, wasn't it? Well, we hold. At number three.
Maybe.
Okay, so for grade 10 math now, we had 38% of our kids. So we didn't blow it out of the water, but it's better than what it was.
So should we raise our next juice?
You know, we had that discussion on what we want to do, and I guess that'll come around here in the fall.
And ELA third, our goal was 48 and we were.
The goal was 50 and our goal, where we at 48, I think, in third grade, 46%. So I'm sorry, we missed it by 4%. Yeah, 4%, which is, like I said, probably one child that we missed, right? Choice ready. That's the next one. So that's our other goal area. So I included in your packets the information about the North Dakota Choice Ready. And then Mr. Beta and Mr. Wentworth dug into the results of the data so that you could see, and that's on page 30, in your packet, where, why the kids didn't make that. And I asked about some of those kids we were talking about that are kids, and he said, I don't, those kids were choice ready. You know, he had a couple of questions. I don't know why if something was messed up in the program, that's where you saw it, right? This is correct. There were some errors in the program that we needed to fix. So those kids were choice ready.
Okay. I had just, I had noticed that we were at graduation or even saw it in a newspaper that it was indicated whether they were choice ready or other indicators. And there were some students that really stood out to me that I knew were honor students and really active in in sports and music and activities. I mean, really outstanding students, and they hadn't been marked as choice ready. And I went, what happened? I don't remember. I didn't pay attention to that.
Some of them had so many cords around their neck, you might not have been able to see that one.
I know, because I was looking at it going, yeah, I thought we got rid of a bunch of cords.
We did, New Year's. Yeah. Yes. So you can see the ASVAB score knocked, but I think if you remember right, Mr. Wentworth kind of talked about that ASVAB score and how they are adjusting that, and ASVAB knocks five of the kids out of there. One student missed it with a low grade PE. And if a child is suspended in or out of school, it knocks them out. We're talking about ways that you can do some kind of, you know, not to make up for, but you can do something. Oh, yeah, some kind of a restorative plan for, you know, certain things, like let's say you get. We wouldn't have reported an in-school suspension for tardies, right? That wouldn't have been it. But let's say when they were freshmen, they got in some trouble for something and they got suspended. There might be some restorative programs to be done. So that's a plan that next year that Mr. Lynch will be working with Mr. Wentworth, because we know that that's when they're freshmen and it knocks them out of being choice ready. You know, we've got to try to do better by our kids, like, you know.
Anytime. It's not just senior year, that's it.
Anytime. If they have an in-school or an out-of-school suspension. Yeah, so I know, I was trying to think of something that would be, you know, like I said, he wouldn't have recorded, re-reported in-school suspension for tardies. These would be some major infractions, probably fighting, stealing, vandalism, things like that, or in trouble. A lot, maybe, maybe might be, you know, we talked about that. Let's say we have a child that behaves when they're like freshmen. Well, our goal is to help those children, right? So we might have some kind of a restorative thing, a class that they could take or something they could do online in order to save for that or, you know, just trying to figure something out so that we don't just, oh, here's your consequence, and there's no way to repeat yourself when you're a freshman in high school, and this is going to affect you when you're a senior. So that's really our goal for that, but. So that's the result of the choice ready. So I think the administrator went worth say 76% of the kids were. 75, yeah, with all of it. So we surpassed our goal there too. I know he's mentioned something about 100% is going to be really high with some of these things, but I still think it's a really good goal. We've got four years. We want all our kids to be choice ready, right, when they leave us? So I think as we start to learn more and the state learns more, we'll be able to figure out some of those areas to try to help kids that they are all choice ready, so.
I like this, this comment or this observation that with the implementation of a cream math or English course, two students would have been choice ready, even with the whole aspects for. So that clearly is something that we should implement to achieve, you know, better achieve our goal.
Yes, and in fact, that was a goal that Mr. Beta and Mr. Wentworth have is to have a cream course in math and a cream course in English for some years. And, you know, I'm an English teacher. We might not have a choice, you know, that might be our.
And fresh everybody's what cream.
Oh, so that is, if the kids are struggling or they don't score as high on their ACT, it's almost like an intermediate course that the kids compete. They're not in college English or, you know, they're not quite at that level. It's prep for college, but it's not maybe college English. Mr. Beta and Mr. Wentworth can explain that better. As we move into the fall, maybe that'll be something they can send on cream, you know, with this. And online, so it covers some of that. So there's, yeah. Item C is strategic plan progress monitoring. I put that in there for you. And this is by guess or by golly. I really struggle on whether to market as a green or yellow or red at times, because some of them we had in place, but that just hasn't been a focus for us. So like the mental health task force, which is goal two under school culture. Well, we had a task force in place, and then we don't have a task force in place anymore, because it just hasn't been carried through. We had the change in leadership from Mr. Steinhaus had it, and then Mr. Getzwee. It just hasn't been kept in place. So I put us back as a red there, because we don't have that. But we have been working with San, or Stanford, yes, at the right. Partnering with them with some mental health stuff. So we're moving forward with it. We just don't have that task force anymore. But we have so many goals on here. I have a feeling that when we do an extra key to plan, that we're going to be having this goal for this. This is just. It still is, when we're progress monitoring even, because like in TSS, we haven't totally been focusing on ITSS. We've been focusing on PCBL, the piece of ITSS in there, except for it is a yellow. So one thing that's good that we do have student achievement goals, so I can put that in the green. Okay, the last thing that I have then is, do you remember talking about the guardrails at the be legendary? So I pulled that guardrails out for you. That's on page 34. And I just, I knew we wouldn't have time to be working on this, but maybe when we have, when we get together, you know, we decide to do that this summer, that we would be able to talk about guardrails and what we'd want to do. So when we have a retreat. But I just put in some things for you that I found. So I found Cincinnati's. I found Columbus's. And that I, Columbus is very good with their guardrails, and then they broke out all of those. And then also, if you have a chance to watch that video, I thought the video was really good. That I. That's what Columbus Schools put out to explain guardrails to anybody. And I actually wanted to watch it, because I've got a better understanding of what guardrails are. So that is. My student put one this month, but did you have any questions on?
I agree with driving into those guardrails more. The one that you have in here, that's just a sample.
Yeah, that was the one that was in our. From the legendary.
Yeah, I think that should, let's make some notes as to what we should have for top of the side of the retreat. Okay, so. All right, any questions or comments on student achievement? If not, thank you. We will move on to committee meetings and reports. It's too soon for a break. And so if you don't mind, I would like to take this opportunity to, and there's still nobody on the. I'm going to take this opportunity to move the Hall of Fame inductee approval to this point. And I'll tell you why I'm doing this, is because as I have been kind of shepherding this process for a few years, I have liked offering the opportunity to the nominator of the inductee to notify the inductee of their approval by the board. And I actually had to track down the nominator. And I happen to know that the inductee is out of town. And I just wanted, I had, I'm trying to coordinate this so the person, the nominator can notify the inductee. And I didn't want, I didn't know if we'd be here till 10 o'clock, but I began to hear. With that, we have, I have activated again a recommendation committee. It's made up of three people, two are alumni, one is not. There are two females and one male this year, and they reviewed all of the nominees that have been in our file for a number of years, and some are, at least one is new this year. And I am really pleased to offer their recommendation to you that the 2023 Hall of Fame inductee should be Susan Sherman. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve Susan Sherman? I will make that motion. Okay, Sheila Nagel moves to approve Susan Sherman as our 2023 Hall of Fame inductee. Is there a second? A second. And why will Dave's seconds? I'm who I was thinking Robert would want to do.
We'll take a roll call, Golden. You can call on Robert.
Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Monica Heimbuck. And Sonny Miel.
Yes, the motion passes five to zero. And congratulations to Susan Sherman, and very well-deserved honor. And I will, as these guys get ready, I will discreetly send a text message. Next item on the agenda for facilities committee is the ICS presentation, part one, lessening sessions and education adequacy and so.
Okay, we'll get started. And first of all, thank you. Thank you for having us. I probably the only one, I think everybody knows Kirk. But I'm Glenn Shire, and I've been with ICS for past 12 years. I'm a retired superintendent. I was in Park Rapids, Minnesota for 10 years. Prior to that, I was a superintendent down in southern Minnesota at Menville County West, which is south of the rumor area. But for the most part of my education career, I was up in Thibodeau recall for 20 plus years. I was a teacher, started out actually as a third grade teacher, then I moved into the high school ranks of the head. That special end degree, back in those days, they always wanted their coaches in the high school, so they conveniently asked me to move. And so, which I was, I was just fine. But I coached three sports there as well, and so I've been around the game for quite a while. And I came to work with ICS, they were in ICS at the time, but I came to work, like I said, 12 years ago. Yeah, we did a project at Park Rapids. That's how I got introduced to this process in the first place. I liked it. Our staff, everybody seemed to like it. And I was at that point of retirement, so went to the bosses and said, got a job for me. Sure, I do. And I said, I can do what you can do. I can sit out and talk in front of people. And I started, I left on a Friday and started on a Monday and been going ever since. So thank you again for having us and Kirk.
Clearly not everybody knows. Oh, okay. Well, you're a legend. You're a legend. Anyway, I'm Kirk Ham. I've been with ICS for about a year and a half. I spent 34 years in North Dakota Education. Started as a high school math teacher, basketball coach, all that stuff. 17 years as a high school principal, and then my last 15 years, I was superintendent of Park River. So I also, actually Glenn was a part of our project about eight years ago. We went through this process as well. Enjoyed it, thought it was very valuable. It's kind of how I got connected with ICS. So that's a little bit about me, and I guess we'll start it out, huh?
So what we're going to do tonight, we did a couple of different assessments. And one of them was what we call the listening sessions. And the other one was educational adequacy. Now, I have to be full disclosure, although we haven't changed it on this slide, we're starting to put the word space in the middle there. And the reason we're doing that is that we've had some schools, specifically teachers, when we talked about educational adequacy, they thought we were talking about the teaching, which we're not, clearly we're not. So that will probably, maybe ensuing things that you see coming out from us, it'll have the word space in between that. But we did a couple of different assessments Kirk and I did when we were here back, backways. And what we did is, is that the whole idea of this process, and this generally, the listening sessions, the educational space adequacy, demographics and so forth, that's usually the first phase of everything. Everything that ICS ever does. So we kind of garner all the information as much as we possibly can, bring it back to you folks, bring it back to our bosses, if you will, and then planning and so forth starts to happen. Lori likes to see this slide after. She just actually added it here not too long ago. If she was here, she'd be going through this. But this is really a puzzle. It's all about putting the pieces of the puzzle together. You can see at the top there, the demographic piece is yet to be done or will be done, I should say. You've got your community stakeholder groups, which we've already done. We'll reference that as we go through the educational needs. And of course, then the last one, the facility needs. And I believe somebody was here about a week ago. So, yeah, doing some of that, getting or garnering some of that information. Just some snapshots, a few pictures of some of the groups that we met with. We started with the listening sessions, although Kirk and I came, we were here for about three days there for a while, and we came early and we actually walked the building or much of the building, I should say, at night, when nobody was around, looking at rooms and taking our, getting our information and so forth. These are the groups that we met with on the listening session. This is by date when we met with them. Obviously, we met with you folks here, representatives from you folks in the administration, high school staff, elementary, district support system, our support staff. We had a community in person in a high school group and then a community virtual. I've been doing this for 12 years, and we had more people than I've ever seen on this one and this one when they were back to back. So whatever Anna did or what anybody did, we did a wonderful job getting people to show up. Not, it's not very, those particular meetings, honestly, folks, are crap shoots. You never know what you're going to have. We've done this, or I've done this in a sense, in front of two people, when we thought we were going to have 30 people, vice versa. So those two particular sessions, Kirk and I came back. We actually did those on a different date or a different timeframe. But nonetheless, they went well. They went very well. We'll touch on that as we get farther into this. If you, if you were involved on the, on the school board one, these are the questions that we asked. Now, all the questions on the left-hand side, and the question were asked by every group, or we went to every group with those. On the right-hand side, you'll see a couple of different variations. Now, with the school board, with you folks, we didn't ask you to give yourself advice, but we did ask you what your expectations were. So we entered, we took that one out and gave that one to you. That would be this one here, that right below that particular bullet. The next one here, we added with the kids, we added, what would you want for your younger siblings going through school that you didn't have? Only the students got that particular one. They got everything else, but we added that one. And then the last one, and we have a slide that talks about this. But when we met with your community groups, we asked them, what's the best way to communicate with you folks? Because the whole idea, not only just tonight, but as you go through the processes, how are you going to communicate that information back to the, to the community? So we asked them to give us their opinions on how, the best way to get the information back out to them. And again, we have that in a slide to show you what they told us. So the next couple of slides, what you're going to see is they're broke out this particular way. On the internal side, that's yourself, that's everybody, I call everybody within the walls of the building. All the staff, kids, yourself are all considered on the internal side. On the external side is obviously your community groups. And if we would have had more community groups, then obviously they would have been part of this. What we did is, these are in no particular order. They are, most of them are the most frequent ones. If you recall, when we did the session, we talked about frequency of everything. So most of these are the ones that were frequent. Again, not in any particular order. We do have some singlets in there. It should be noted, even though you see it ending here, there was many, many more than this. We just couldn't get them all on the slide. So we just, we have to cut it off at some given point. We try as much as we can to point out on the different aspects of it as far as where you see commonalities, because to the board and to, I'll say, to staff in general, and even the community groups, that's what's important. Are you aligned anywhere possible with this particular piece, with both your external and internal groups? So you can see some of the, some of the comments made, PC, CBL, the technology part, excellent committed teachers, great staff, full-time SRO, helpful office staff, and so on and so forth. Get over here, your vocational center, and again, this is not in any particular order, but your community involvement, which was proven by how many people showed up. We got onto the virtual call as well. Superintendent invested, I think Anna paid somebody to say that. But, but anyway, we put it in, and actually, we did see it more than once. So Anna, you didn't just have a lone ranger talking about you there. Student involvement opportunities, engagement, respectful students. But we're thinking teachers, staff that cares about kids, and great coaches. That was a great thing. We always start with that particular question. We follow then with a challenge question. Again, not in any particular order, but you can see right at the top, both sides talked about the shortage and tough retention of teachers, the aging facilities or building, constant educational changes, new initiatives on the internal side, student behavior, lack of subs, school board hearing teachers' voices, leadership team and board, money, and so on and so forth. Right-hand side on the external, again, the shortage of teachers or retention, excuse me, parking, finances, facilities, future security needs, need more room for kitchen, storage, bed program, mental health, and locker space in the high school. And stop me at any given point if you have a question about any of this. We added the mission statement question about, about a month ago or so, maybe, I want to say two, two customers ago. We used to have a couple of different questions that would show up. We talked about headlines question, what would you want to see in the headlines? What if you won the lottery and that kind of thing? We found that we weren't really getting what we thought we wanted to get out of that. So we added the mission statement, and the purpose behind it was, whether it's your board or some, or your predecessors, someone came up with your mission statement. And the question to them was, how many people actually know? And what do they think it is? What does it mean to them? So we asked now, every group, we show them that mission statement, and then we asked them to give us their opinion on what they think it means. Now, what you see in front of you right now is not the exhausted list. Again, we had so many that we couldn't put it all on. But if you take it. But if you take it from the top, these are two that we picked out in a sense from you, from the school board, where we met with you folks. Right below that would be the high school teachers. Right here in the middle, in the blue, is your elementary, support staff and kids. Gives you a little flavor of what they think that mission statement actually means. Now, they had many more. We just tried to pick out the best we could out of, out of what was there. Questions. Now, we asked the same thing of your community groups. This is in no particular order and it isn't mixed up by virtual or face to face. But these were comments that we got then from your community groups. You see up there in the left-hand corner, providing a high quality education and prepares students for college and beyond. Personalized learning, I went across over of all O P S students in the middle, providing academic instruction. Life skills to be ready for, ready them for the work world, excuse me, workforce, higher ed and military. No student left behind. And again, they gave us several of these. We just picked out what we could manage to make sure we got on the page here. This was both, both your community groups. And over time, and this is a fairly new question that we asked, so we're, we're kind of learning a little bit about how effective it ultimately is. I mean, we wanna ask questions that have some effectiveness to it. The other part of that is, in going back to the original questions. The reason why we ask the same questions of everybody, obviously, when we bring it back to you with data, information. We gotta give you comparable stuff, so we try not to mix that up too much. Questions though about this.
See a, missed a little error there. I got it twisted twice, so that's my bad. There were certainly many, many more.
It's that Park River Superintendent.
Yeah, I know.
You never see that on a Minnesota superintendent. I'm the worst guy.
Ask him who did the part.
Yeah.
We'll see if he wants to take over.
Questions though. Advice. We always tee it up and we say to the folks, says, alright, we're gonna bring a lot of information, which is obviously what we're doing tonight. And you have some work coming to you. Um, what advice would you give to the decision makers? We reference that as the school board as well as administration. On the internal side, again, not in any particular order, but these are the, uh, many of these were the frequent ones that we saw. On the internal side, support staff and listen to them. Do the, what's best for kids now and into the future. Listen to teacher input, get input and listen to students. Maintain, don't wait until it's broken. Communicate. Take the time to plan with people who use the spaces each day. We're all on the same team, looking at improving the learning environment that you are supplying for your teacher, teachers slash students. Right side or in external. Just remember that not all traditional families with steady, uh, not all our traditional families with steady incomes. Income consider their needs, more public input, listens to the patrons, use feedback, don't just collect it. Think long-term, consider all the options, prioritize based on need and funding. Ensure students have access to all educational need, especially language. Consider teacher needs also and communicate. And again, you see some commonalities as you go back and forth between these. Expectations, now this, oops. Oh, there you go. Expectation, now this was your list. This was your, your entire list. We didn't cut anything out of this particular one. But when we asked you what your expectations were of the process. And again, it isn't just this particular piece, it's the educational space analysis, it's the demographic and so on and so forth. So that's the essence of what we were asking you that day. But you told us, you wanna have a long-term plan in place that pro, that priorities prioritize our needs. Help bridge uh, help bridging gap between community and needs of, of the school. To have a comprehensive information-driven facility plan to lead us into the future. To have a clear plan, timeline of facility needs that will allow the board to focus on student needs. On the other side, uh, let's have some usable information we can implement and afford. We're not talking about building a new school next year. Have a long-term plan on facility maintenance, construction and a financial planning. To have comprehensive information-driven facilities planned to lead us into the future. All stakeholders should understand this is a long-term act. But that's your exhausted list. Again, not in any particular order, we just, the way we put it on the page, around the slide. What we did here is graph this one out for you. This is that one question again that we switched up for the kids. What you see at the bottom would tell you how many times we actually saw that. So these numbers represent how many times that we saw it, that's where the graph goes. Dedicated quality teachers right on top. Teachers that are our long-term student lounge. You want one of those? And then a lot, I call them singlets, but then you have a lot of singlets going to down the rest of the list. This is their entire list.
No, there is a couple off there.
Oh, is there?
Because swimming pool was on there.
Oh.
And I would have seen that.
Okay, alright.
That I do remember.
Give you a chance to read those. You want more dances, by the way? Right in there.
Yeah, I made the mistake of asking what that meant. I got way more information.
But it was only sent by one person?
Yeah. As far as the communication, now this is on the external side. Again, these numbers represent how many times we saw it. Newspaper was way out there, email was way out there, obviously, school websites, social media. Then we got the snail mail. O P S app, you can see it just sort of gradually comes down, public meetings, Facebook and then some singlets at the end there. But this represents that piece.
Can you speak to the demographics of the public groups, the community groups? Cause when I see newspaper, I think older demographic.
Well, we actually had a mix here. I thought we had a pretty decent blend between older, middle and, and younger. Uh, in both the virtual and the face-to-face. We had twenty, how many in the face-to-face, twenty?
Thirty-five.
It was, okay.
I think it was over thirty.
And, and then on the uh virtual, we had. Four, nineteen or twenty.
Yeah, somewhere right in there.
Yeah, that's what I say, I was, I was, cause I've been doing it for a long time. Usually you don't get, especially back-to-back. You don't get, and they weren't the same people, we know that, we were confident of that. But the face-to-face was, was a nice blend. I think the virtual might have been a little bit of a younger group. But then everybody's younger than I am, so I guess it could, they could have been anything, but, but they were a little bit of a younger group. Um. But it was good, they were good, they were, they were active. We got a lot of, lot of information, got into some dialogue and. Well, you know, that was interesting for a while. Um, but it wasn't bad, it wasn't bad dialogue, it just, you know, some concerns or some. Areas that they wanted to be part of or at least be, what, there was a uh co, a conversation we got into, they wanted to know. Why we weren't giving this to them at the same time we were giving it to you. And I was trying to explain that, first of all, you, you guys see it first, before anybody. Now, we're gonna come back in a later day, we, I'll show you at the end, we have the schedule to come back to the community groups. But I was trying to explain, you need to see it first as far as the board. And you're not making decisions, it's just that you need to see it first, then we let it go from there. Now, my sense was, the reason the question came is that maybe the individual wanted to get into a dialogue with the board. Um, which would be unfair to you and not fair to anyone for that matter. Because you haven't had a chance, by the time this is all done, you, you need time to digest all this.
Are we beginning a, a copy of this?
Mm-hmm, yes. And now what I'm gonna do is Kirk is gonna walk you through uh as far as the facility question that we asked. So he'll walk you through all that data and then we'll, we'll move on to, we'll answer questions about this, but then we'll move on to the yet. He had uh the space adequacy piece.
So that, that is a question we did ask all groups, was the facility question and uh. So this was the board's list. Um, and I can't remember how many he voted for. You know, it was six or whatever. So uh, as you can see going down there. Top of the list was kitchen size, H V A C, plumbing. Windows, high school windows, um, east entrance overhang, which we saw from other internal groups. And of course, the high, high school science floor was an issue, lack of space, bus barn. Um, additional educational spaces in elementary, track facility and I think that was referencing. Restrooms and concessions, if I remember right, and listing to other groups. And so forth, you can read them obviously. Um, uh, I'm not sure if they're all on there, but I think they're pretty much all, all of them that showed up. Were on there. So you can see what rose to the top there and later on, we'll do a comparison of internal and external, kind of side by side. You'll be able to maybe see that a little bit better. Um, these were elementary teachers, what they felt were the greatest needs, additional educational spaces, which is pretty common. That's a big, that's a big need everywhere. Uh, dedicated reset room, um, there's different names for that, but. That's what they call it here, additional conference room space, storage. Actually a big issue. And they also mentioned the kitchen or teacher workroom space. And I think when we talked about that, that space in the elementary side is pretty small, isn't it Anna?
Mm-hmm.
The element, the high school, I think is pretty good. Uh, more restrooms, better signage, new blinds. Uh, designated in-school suspension space and then they listed some of the other things, plumbing, science room floors. Lack of temp control and so forth.
Yeah, the numbers on the bottom represent how many times they put it number, for instance, that very top one, there's their, their number one choice. They couldn't vote multiple times after that little speech I gave. They couldn't put the same number down, you know, eight, ten times or whatever, listen.
They picked so, you got to vote for so many, but you couldn't vote for any more than once. Uh, this is the high school staff, so the top of their list was temp control in high school. Um, and elementary windows and screens, more parking for not only students and staff, but also events, they talked about that. Um, need to relieve congestion in high school hallways and um. We talk about the high school facility, that was one of the things that the, the hallways were a little narrow than, than the uh recommendations. Updated football, baseball facilities, better use of space in high school. Um, east entrance overhang, again, that shows its, shows up again. Finish upgrades and maintenance and um larger high school spaces and we'll talk about that when we get to the. We talk about the space part of this, student commons area. Um, update track facilities again, I think, I believe that was referencing the restrooms and so forth. Um. Anyway, you can read those. Here's the support staff and they, it is fairly small group, six or something like that, so um. Their top of their list was H V A C. Um, looks to me like things they deal with, obviously, so H V A C sewer system, which we heard some. Some things about, some of the issues you guys are dealing with there. Again, the east entrance overhang, windows, storage. And so forth, and you can kinda read that down there. Um. Kitchen does show up on that one as well. This was the students list, so um. Their biggest ones were parking, those top four were all had the same number responses, so more parking. Third floor issues, bigger lockers, more indoor space for athletics. Um, locker room issues. Believe that was a reference to restroom.
Yeah, like the one bathroom stall, right?
Yeah, they talked about stalls without doors and things. Um, the athletic training room, I believe that's shared with the I T V room, if I remember correctly. And then H V A C, again, the east overhang, um, leaking roof. Um, plumbing, again, we see that one, more secure entrances to Buzz's office. Um, windows, space concerns for upcoming classes, cause I know you. Yes, you've got at least one really big class coming up, so, and so forth. Oh, that's where swimming pool short. I knew it was on here and I remember the kid that said it and he kinda like, should I put it on there? I go, put it on.
So the, the issue with lockers, maybe you don't know this, but. A few years ago, we rid out a bunch of the lockers in the high school, cause nobody used them. And so is there, are we talking about lockers in the locker rooms?
No, no, this is, this is student lockers, they're not locker room lockers.
Nobody uses them.
I do remember.
For what they have, okay, they cannot fit both they.
I, yeah. I, my, again, I don't know, but my guess is looking at those lockers, I'd give you a, I've never seen anything like that in my life. It's just, it's just so small.
It's unusable.
It's really unusable and. But I do remember that was definitely hallway lockers, not locker room.
But yeah, like.
So the internal group again, and Glenn talked about that, everybody involved in the building. So these were the, the things that rose to the top. Um, the kitchen, uh, the size of the kitchen, the updated equipment, east entrance overhang, H V A C, temp control. Parking, um, sewer system and plumbing issues, windows, third floor of the high school. Additional space, storage. Bus barn issues, track facility issues. Classroom space concerns in elementary and high school, high school lockers, um. Locker room needs renovation, um, additional teacher workroom space and finish upgrades and maintenance. Now, this is not an exhaustive list, this is everything that had, I think at least two or three votes, so. So this is what we got from the in-person group, the community, the first community group that we met with, so. There and you can see that there was a large group because in the number one thing, it's twenty-six votes. So they had high school roof uh over the top, the elementary septic, obviously you're aware of that issue. Uh, mechanical integrity. Um, so I'll, I'll just say that the guy that put that. With mechanical integrity also put building envelope and then he explained it at the meeting and everybody goes, oh, that makes sense. And um. So, and then the science lab, the third floor science lab, parking was an issue. Um, so mechanical integrity is my, my understanding, we explained it was like H V A C and all the mechanical things in the building. Um, cause he had a history with that, I believe. Um, and then the building envelope was kind of the exterior. Talking pointing the grand, all those kinda things. Um, the kitchen, um, bigger and updated kitchen was on there, general maintenance, cosmetic look. Um, modern bathroom facilities at the track, better sound system in the south gym. Um, again, more availability, bathrooms at the track, not enough gym space and so forth, you can see that. So that was the in-person group. So this was the virtual group, we met with them the next day. So their top choice, again, G C fourteen, so it was a pretty, pretty good sized group that we had. Parking, um, shortage of special services space, um. Aging facility at the high school, drop off and pickup area and they weren't really specific on what that exactly meant. We, we've talked to Anna about that a little bit, I think she knows probably what those concerns are. Plumbing, window replacement, uh, one building level versus multiple levels. Future security needs for the building, uh, more storage for kitchen, roof repair, replacement. Um, track should have new concessions, inaccessible playground, leave that was uh. Handicap accessibility question there. Small junior high science room and larger classrooms and lockers for the high school. So that was the, that was the virtual group we met the next day. So here, um, in taking those two groups and putting together, what are their top issues? You see them listed there, parking, track facilities, I'm not gonna read them all, cause I just went through them basically. Um, but that was the list, taking everything that had multiple votes, those groups. So now we try to piece those two together. So we take the internal and the external and we look for trends, we look for. Um, frequency of answers and so um. The, the things that correlate basically kitchen size. The internal stakeholder said kitchen size, updated equipment, the external said bigger and updated kitchen, pretty much the same thing. Parking was the, was the. Large. So the issue for both groups, track facility, again, rose to the top, sewer system, plumbing issues. And again, they, they basically say in the same things, third floor of the high school, science rooms. Um, sound a little different, but in, in listening to that discussion. Science room was referenced, or the third floor of the high school, they were referencing the project you're doing now. Um, and we'll talk about that. And we'll talk about that when we go through the facility part. And adequacy part, windows, HVAC and temp control, which. Not equated to mechanical integrity and so forth. Additional educational speed, space, workroom space and, and the external thought shortage of special services space, so I put those two together. Finish upgrades and maintenance and then general maintenance, then I just added a few other things that. That, that were showed up multiple, I, I was really surprised, not really, but. You know, the internal people who are here every day, every one of them listed that east entrance overhang and, and nobody on the external. Because I'm guessing they don't use it much, is that what, is that why that would be? But anyway, that, those were the correlations, the things that rose to the top, the things that connected with those. With those external and internal stakeholders. Questions. It's really hard to just go through this and then questions, because they know you have a lot of them, yes, you get a copy and you, you can kind of dig a little deeper. Anything that you saw there that. Surprised you, or did most of it kind of fall into? Into play how you thought maybe it would come out, or some of the things that people would say. So we did, we did go through kind of a speed up version with Anna last week, just to kind of give her a heads up and. See if we kind of had our ducks in a row too, she, this is not, you know, she's kind of seen, we didn't go through the detail we will tonight, but. So she has seen that, so she had some, and we, and we were able to ask her some questions, which was good, and she asked us questions, that was.
One of the things that we found over, over the years. From the listing sessions, a lot of times people come to the meeting, whether it's internal or external, it doesn't matter. But they come with, with some concept in their mind that this is their venting time. And, and although some answers reflect that, it really doesn't lend itself. For that, in a sense, it's more of, and I can tell you for a fact, and I mentioned to Kirk during the one community session, there was a judgment. And I'm sure he came to vent, and when he found the way this was running, he never wrote a post note, in fact, he gave his post notes to somebody behind him. Only, and the only reason I know that is because the person behind him was writing like crazy, and I walked by him and he just sat, he wasn't, he wasn't mad, I mean, he didn't. Argue or anything, but I think he came with a different perception of it. The beauty part about this is that it does, that doesn't get in the way of trying to get responses from people. And once they realize, because sometimes people have no idea, I mean, we used to start off by asking, do you know why you're here? And I can't tell you how many times I've watched people go, they told me to go, that kind of thing. So it's, it's an interesting, but it's a, it's a process that over the time has really helped us. To get a flavor from where people are at, people being internal, external, and then showing some of those common. Questions though, anything on that?
Well, my biggest thing would be from the internal, how many people voted for a reset? I don't even know what that is, or how big it would need to be or what that, is that a normal thing at other schools or? Yeah, you know. Like in my school, this, we called it a calming room. You know, it, it has a variety of names, it's usually for. Behavioral special ed kids. We, that's, that's what we use it for, and I'm sure that's what they were talking about, we, we did talk about it a little bit, but. That came, if I remember right, exclusively from the elementary. But a lot of people voted for it. Size, like a ten by ten or like a twenty by twenty? Well, it depends, it's usually a small.
But it's not thought to be.
We have it, but it's like right by the lunchroom and it's not soundproof, and there's no privacy and if something's going awry, everybody knows it.
Over the years, that's changed, as a special ed teacher for thirty some years, that's changed over the years, what those. Because they, they used to, they used to have nothing, then they went to a calming room. Then they figured out they better not have. Where they can mark up the walls and stuff, so then they started putting different materials in there, if not padding. Then they found, because they used to have a door on there, then they found they shouldn't have a door on there, so that has actually changed over time. But it's, it's interesting, it's surprising to me how many schools we walk into that don't have that. And there's those kids that need that time, they need to be able just to, just to get away, and you want that, you want to get them away from everybody else in a sense. So they're not too disruptive, there's a lot of schools that actually don't have it.
And oftentimes that, that will show up as anxiety. That that's part of their behavior plan that they go to the reset.
It's not necessarily a bad thing either, I mean.
It's positive, it's, it's a really, it's a good thing. In my experience.
Good question, anything else though, from that piece? The other assessment. That we, we have done, and we do this again in most schools, and again, I'll repeat, this should probably have the word space. In between it, but we take a look at all the spaces within the school. Every space Kirk and I walked through the entire school for basically that evening and most of the next day, or a lot of the next day, and even part of the following day. Measuring spaces, taking out, reading our notes, looking for natural light or counter space and so on. Bathrooms are the handicapped accessible, how big are the rooms and so on, and so. What we found is that, not that North Dakota doesn't have. Specifics or guidelines, they just don't have a formal set. And I mentioned this when we were, I think when we, I met with the, the board here or the group that was here from the board. That we, we then use Minnesota. Just because they have a formal set, now to be honest with you, we've used Minnesota and Philadelphia when I was there, using it in South Dakota as well, just because it was something we could use from a guideline perspective. And, and not even though this is not a Minnesota thing, what I'm clear to tell people that the guidelines are just that. They're not policies and they're never mandates, because in some cases, there are only so much, if you were going to remodel, there's only so much you can do anyway. But they're just guidelines of what spaces should be let. The other thing that we try to stress with both internal and teachers especially, but groups in large. That we're not there evaluating teaching at all. And, and oftentimes, so that's why we came here actually at night when nobody was around, because oftentimes when we walk into a room. Not only are we disruptive, but then the teacher might think we're realizing what they're doing, and that's not it at all. During the COVID time, I know I was in a district up in the range, and they actually thought, they referred to us as the COVID police. Said, no, 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 we're not the COVID police, that's not what's going on here, but we, it took a while to convince everybody that we were just there to look at the box. So that particular piece, we went through, like I said, all the different spaces, and what we did between Kirk and I is that we, we broke this up. We both looked at all the spaces and we talked about it, we went through our, our analysis and so forth, but I mainly took care of the elementary, he took, took care of the high school. So that's how we'll break this off for you as well. So one of the models too is that, that the guidelines that we have used, there are many more guidelines than this. But ICS, people before my time even, put together an assessment tool, and they took eighteen of those categories. And you can see classroom size and suitability, number two there, again, this is in no particular order, it's just the way we put it together. Security and supervision, main office, nurses area, science labs, art lab, or art classrooms, music, staff. Lounge collaborative area. Commons, if it's there, FIAED, site suitability, that's your green space, your drop off, your technology, the media center, location, where it's at. Special ed support systems, auditoriums, if you have one, career tech and hallways. So for middle and high school, middle school and high school, we analyzed this from eighteen different categories. Elementary, we analyze it from seventeen, this is the only one that gets taken out because you don't teach current tech at the elementary level. Otherwise, all of our, all of our data, everything we took was based off of that, so here's a sample. For instance, of category number one. So a general classroom, and I'll just use the elementary for specifically, I, when we walked in. Anything, any grade one, two, three, and on up to six, for instance, we would be looking, is it eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred and fifty square feet? If it's a K room, is it twelve hundred to fifteen hundred? If you had an early childhood program, do they have, is it a thousand square feet? We look at storage, cabinetry, color spaces, a little kid, they have. Most people that have been around the education world know that elementary teachers can never have enough storage or counter space, they just don't, they've got a lot of stuff going on. But we look for that to see where it's at, how many electrical outlets, how is that natural light? Do they have a whiteboard or, or a smart board, that type of thing, as, as well as. Furniture, is it easily moved, can they put them in small groups, can they put them in rows, how, how can, how or what can they do within the scope of their room? So that's just an example of it. Then what we did, after Kirk and I were done, we took all our notes. We sat down, he and I, and he worked on the high school, I worked on the elementary, then we talked. Went back and forth and we said, this is what I think it is for this X, Y, and Z, he did the same for him, or his, his stuff, and we kind of went back and forth. And, and truth be told, not that it's a bad thing, but we don't. He and I, he and I, as well as my other partner, we don't always agree on what we thought we saw, because we're looking at it from different eyesight. And so that, but that's a good thing for us to work through that. But we did that first. Then what we did is we did take some of the feedback, we looked at some of the feedback that we got from staff. Mainly on that challenge question, they would tell us some things there. One of the other parts that we typically, or we would oftentimes do, but it doesn't always work because of schedules. Instead of just using feedback, what we would oftentimes do is meet with staff on a staff development day. We would go through all eighteen of those categories, then they would give us feedback. On their respective areas, positive or challenge or negative. That's really, really helpful, but it doesn't always work because you've got to have a lot of time to do it, and it's just, you know, oftentimes doesn't work in schedules. But we looked at what they gave us on the listening session, and then the last piece, once we got through this. And we tentatively had what our report, we thought our report would look like, then we met, met with your building principals individually. Went through all of the information and they gave us feedback. Now, again, this was a little different this time, this is one of the few times that I've been in a building when kids were there. Typically, we're there when they're not there. That isn't to say that we wouldn't have an idea, I mean, we've been in the education field for a long time, but sometimes when kids are in the building, in a particular space. It would be different than what we may see when it's, when it's empty, but we happen to be here then, but nonetheless, we met with the, the building principals. Individually, got their feedback, and then we met with Anna and went through the whole thing again. So that's how we came, the three-legged stool in a sense, that's how we came up with what we're going to show you here in a minute. Again, they're just guidelines, just guidelines. Questions on that at all? So what we did then, for each one of those categories within the scope of, of that area. If you see a green, that means that it, it met or exceeded the guidelines. If it is a yellow or you see a yellow, we call it questionable, it's not a bad thing. And we've had, we've gone to great lengths to get people to understand, if you see yellow, it doesn't mean it's a bad space, it just means it didn't check all the boxes. And I think we finally have got that down fairly well that, and convincing people, because when I, again, when I first started, anytime anybody saw yellow, they freaked out, they thought, oh my God, between the elves and the reds, our school is going to fall over. Well, it's not true, this, this just means it just wasn't quite. Quite in the green category, so to speak, so if you do see a red though, that does mean that it's, it's not meeting some of those guidelines. More than some, it's probably meaning, in some cases, might not be meeting any. So that's what you'll see here coming up. Questions on that? The one thing folks, and I've said this, I've repeated it many, many times. Of all the years I've been together, when I followed the guys around that were first doing this, and I watched all these colors, I kept thinking. How's that going to play out? I can assure you, after tonight, you may forget what we said, but you will not forget those colors. And that's, that's been universal, no matter where we've gone, people just remember that. And as, as time goes on, as far as whatever school may end up doing, whether they're remodeling or whatever the project may be. People will ask the question, did you change this? That red to a yellow or a green or white, whatever that may be, they just seem to latch on to that, which is not a bad thing, it's just that it's a matter of, of, it's an easy, it's an easy assessment to follow. So just a couple of pictures of your, your media center. Here's your elementary. As far as category number one. Virtually every classroom you have at that end falls within the, within those guidelines. You've got four rooms that are in the eleven, eleven hundred or a thousand square feet range. You've got several that are in the eight fifty to eight eighty range, all falls in there very, very well. All natural light, probably the only thing that kind of, kind of kicked this one a little bit on the green as far as the category number one. The bathrooms in the little people's rooms, they're not handicapped accessible. Which is a big deal nowadays. And that's, you're going to hear a little bit more about that in, in a while here, but that's a big deal. Category two, and stop me at any given point, category number two there, as far as cafeteria is concerned. We look for a dining area that, excuse me, dining area that's. Anywhere from a thousand fifteen hundred square feet, serving line eight, six hundred to eight hundred. Square feet, as far as the prep, the prep area, we're looking at. Twelve hundred to sixteen hundred square feet, in your case here, and this particular one down here, you're just under twenty-six hundred square feet as far as the dining area. Should be, that means it's, it's in the, it's in the, where it should be. Where it fell short is your kitchen, the actual kitchen. Kitchen was above five hundred.
Five forty-eight.
Five forty-eight as far as square footage, wash bay was really small, that part of it is what caused this to ultimately be a red. The dining area worked fine, it fell within the guidelines, but the rest of it did not. So that's where the red came with that. Number three there, the reason that's red, you have security here, there's no question about it. But I got to be honest, in the world we live in now, almost any school we walk into. If you have a vestibule, which you do have, unless you have a door walking that goes into the office. And then they can exit back out. A school, we ultimately give that a red, because that's, that's the world we live in nowadays. Obviously, the, the people here can see who's coming through the door, but literally, if once somebody got through that door, they can go wherever they want to go. Nobody's going to stop. So we look for that vestibule, in a sense, like you have, but coming into the office. Checking in and then going out another door, once they're checked in or they're okay or that type of thing, so that's where the red came. Otherwise, folks, you, you're, you've got key fobs, you've got, you know, you've got all the necessary things you need relative to that piece. That's the only reason this particular one ended up being red. And a lot of schools. Unfortunately, have, have left that one piece out of it, as far as that into the office, out of the office, check in part. It's number four there on the main office, all of that, all of this particular piece fell well, well within the guidelines. The reception area, the office space for, for Anna's office, the principal's office and so forth and so on, so that was, that was an easy one. Reason, uh, science and art are NA is most of the time in elementary, they're on the cart. So we're not really analyzing a room, because they're doing it within the room, so that's why you see the NAs there. As far as music classroom, your current music classroom, basically in elementary, it's usually a general ed, or general music. It's eight hundred and fifty-four square feet, I don't remember the number off the top, oh, room one thirty-four, has ten foot ceilings. Got natural light and so on, so on and so forth, we're actually looking for as far as, as far as the. Guidelines are concerned, a thousand to fifteen hundred square feet. But really, it's, it's a room that they teach music in. It's not a music room that they teach music in, again, not a bad thing, but that's just the way that particular plays out, so thus is why, where the red came in here. As far as the staff lounge and, and that particular area, the reason this did have, as far as space wise. We look for anywhere from three to four hundred square feet, does it have the natural things with, whether it be. A microwave and, and. Coffee machines or, or not coffee, sinks and so on and so forth. Your particular room had some of those things, what it didn't have, and we always look for this, is a collaborative area. Relatively close for staff to get together if they're, they're talking about curriculum, grade level, that type of thing, that's relatively close. It's down around the corner, as I understand it, and they don't have that there, they did have a bathroom, it was close. But that was the particular piece, so again, it just didn't happen to check all the boxes, that's where the, where the yellow came in. As far as student comments, not uncommon, the fact that elementary kids, but we often say, where do you take a large group of kids if you wanted, if you have a reason to do that? There's really no identified area for that. If two classes wanted to come together. And so that's where the red came in that particular piece. FIAED, I presumed that the, the south gym was the one that they primarily used for the little people. Which well within the guidelines, so that was not an issue whatsoever, had all kinds of space over there, it's, I think it's sixty-nine, almost seven thousand square feet. Yeah, sixty-nine hundred and thirty-six. Square feet, of course, you've got the stage, big stage there, six stations, the one thing I found interesting, neither gym had it, but didn't have a divider. Usually we're looking for, looking to see if they have a divider so they can have individual stations. And have things going on, but neither gym had it, but the size of that gym far exceeded what, what was needed as far as an elementary. Was concerned, so that's where the green came there. But the size of that gym far exceeded what, what was needed as far as an elementary was, was concerned. So that's where the green came there. Site suitability, basically just not any green space. I know I questioned a couple of times, where does a Fayed teacher, what does he do or she do? Do, as far as wants to take, if they wanna take the kids and go play soccer or whatever it is, well, they gotta walk them down the, down to the baseball field. Which is whatever, a couple of blocks away. So there's no real identified green space. And that's what we're looking for, and that particular piece, that's where the red came in there. The parking and bus drop-off, we got kind of mixed, uh, reviews as far as information based on, on how effective that was. Honestly, I heard, I heard everything from, it doesn't work because it get all stacked up and so forth, to some people saying, oh, it's just, it's just fine. But the one thing that came out very clearly was your event parking. How much event parking did you have? So again, you do have the separation. We look for separation between buses and where the parents would drop off their kids. A lot of schools have it combined, and kids are running to buses and so on, and so on, and so forth. You're, you're not, that's not the case here. So again, it checks some of the boxes, but that event parking came up a lot relative to whack-off. So that's where that, where the yellow came there. Technology, we're fine. And, and if my, if, if gentleman I work with, who's actually the media guy that really understands this stuff very well. He often says COVID took care of that. Most schools nowadays are creating the technology part, because everybody's one-to-one. Or has gone to one-to-one. Library media center, who, I mean, I, I've been bragging about that space for, ever since I've been there. Up in Goodrich, Minnesota, we're doing some work up there. Said, you can't believe this media center. It's just, it's unbelievable. It is. It's just great. So, easy one there. The special ed service part of it, you have the suite, have a, a bunch of cut-out little rooms. They're in that one ninety, two hundred square feet range, no natural light. Uh, in some cases, just a table, that type of thing in there. Yeah, we're looking for spaces where it might be for smaller groups. Uh, maybe that five to eight kids, about four hundred and fifty square feet. And then maybe a larger room, a regular-sized room, uh, for a larger group of kids. Uh, thus is why you do have some spaces. Uh, you do have places for people, or the teachers do to, to take kids into a, a smaller area to work with them. But, but frankly, they're just, there was a few things that they didn't have, be it natural light. And that's been the, one of the big things, just to take off on the natural light. You have plenty of natural light in a lot of areas. A lot of schools don't have that. It used to be, back when I was teaching and or going to school, natural light was, was a taboo kind of thing. You don't wanna have that. You, you, it's too distracting and all those kinds of things. In today's society, they talk a lot about having the natural light, and how much more positive and effective it can be. But nonetheless, it did check some of the boxes, uh, not all of them, and that's where the yellow came. Uh, I don't, I won't reference this, either one of these, because obviously your gym is, is, and Kirk is gonna talk about this anyway. Uh, fif- sixteen and seventeen. As far as the hallways are concerned, locker rooms, nine-foot hallways down here. We were looking for ten. You've got this locker room bay, which is great. It's a, it's a great area as far as that's concerned. But between the hallways being relatively tight and the washrooms. Other than the washrooms that are down by the gym, I don't think we found a washroom that was handicap accessible in the building. And we, I talked to your, to, uh, to your elementary principal as well. I forgot to mention about your, your playground area. Got great playground equipment, but it's not handicap accessible. But you don't have anybody that's currently in a wheelchair or that type of thing. We did have one lady, that's where you saw it in a listening session. One lady must be, must have a child that's coming into your school, or is already there, that's a special needs kid. Because she specifically asked, and that came up in that listening session piece. But when you look at a, at a bathroom, as far as, is, uh, handicap accessible. It's gotta be in a position where you can, you can bring a wheelchair in and actually turn it around. And most of the doors, most of the doors on the stalls are in that twenty-eight inch range. They've gotta be at least thirty, I think it's thirty-six, yeah, thirty-six to get through it. And be able to have a radius where they can actually turn around if they were in a wheelchair, kind of thing. And unfortunately, not any of these, other than the ones down by the, the gyms. Or these here, I'm sorry.
Well, the ones down there.
So that's where, again, you have, obviously you have some of the things, again, this locker bay is, is, is a wonderful spot as far as that's particulars is concerned. Of course, some of the rooms had the hooks. And, and I'm not trying to gross anybody out, but I call that the lice, the lice-infected piece. Cause that's what happens when you, you get little kids that are continually putting their jackets side by side by side. That's when you start having lice problems or potentially a lice problem. Not all the time, but it does happen. Um, but your locker, you've got, actually, these are twelve by twenty-one. They're as deep as any locker I've ever seen, so it's kind of ironic. You go up to high school, you got a small, the smallest thing you've ever seen, you go over here and you got one of the largest things. Know how that works, but anyway. But question. Question, and that, and that, thus is where the yellow came. Questions on any of this? Anything that? You disagree with, or you just, you're, you're shocked by, or makes sense, or? I know I've gone through this with Anna a couple of times, so, yeah, go ahead.
Your number eleven there, the green space, like, how big of a green space would they need?
Well, if you go by guidelines, five to seven acres for an elementary. Thirty to forty for a high school. And honestly, I, I mean, I, I hesitate to even say that in a sense, but. Most, most communities that happen to have their schools in the community will never, don't have that. That's a lot of your smaller communities or your older schools. They just don't have that. We see that where it might be somebody that's built, or they happen to be out, out farther in the country where they do have that space. Um, but that's, that's what guideline is called. Obviously, unless you're gonna buy up houses, um, you're not gonna have that. And, but that does happen. Green in Minnesota, we did a, we did all of this. And literally, um, the school, or they worked out a situation where they bought. They had a school right in the middle, and it was just a pit. It was as bad as I've ever seen. And they bought, they remodeled, but they bought the houses around, not all of them, but they bought some of them, so they were able to expand that and get in, into a little bit more green space. But really, right now, if your Fayed folks wanted to go outside with the kids to do almost anything, they're gonna have to go down to your baseball. Down to that. And that's. Bless their heart. If they can walk them all the way down and get something done and walk all the way back to them, bless their heart. I mean, I, I, I know I've said that a couple of times. You mean, they walk them all the way down there, get all the way back. They do that within an hour. Yep, okay. I mean, but it. Obviously, they make it work, but that's where that comes into play, that. Site suitability, whereas the green space. Any also, good question. Nothing. Shocked. I know it's been a lot. You're getting a lot of, going at you here, but. Anna, did we hit anything? I know we've talked, obviously, Kirk mentioned that. We've talked several times. Okay, well, then I will turn it over to Kirk, and he'll handle the high school part.
All green, all the way up.
Yeah, yeah. I can't remember if you mentioned it or not, but we did, once we did, went through this process and assigned the color and everything. We met, uh, online with the. You know, outgoing high school principal and the incoming, and we went through every category with them and asked for their input and so forth, and. Uh, we agreed on ninety-nine percent of it. We had a couple of things where maybe not so sure, and then we met with. The elementary staff and, or the elementary principal did the same thing, and then we met with Anna. And, and went through the whole thing, her, and got input from them, uh, to kind of help us guide through that. So. Um, um, no, it is not all green. It was close, but, um, so the first, the first, uh, section class size and suitability. So in a high school classroom, you're looking for eight fifty to nine fifty. Um, you know, all the rooms, pretty much all the rooms had, had. Smart boards and all those kind of things, but, uh, most of the rooms here, I'll just pull a few of them. Most are like six hundred, six twenty, six fifty. The IT year was seven forty, but like, for core classes. Like math room, three sixteen is six hundred and fifty square feet, so. Um, I know you have a large class coming up with like fifty kids. So now imagine that, that room, and I know people are gonna say, well, we did that when I was a kid. I understand that, but. Um, there is a space with twenty-five kids in it, probably. And a teacher and a desk and not much else, and, and really not much room to move, because that's a pretty small space to put. Uh, twenty-five kids in. So, anyway, that was a, to be honest with you, that was pretty easy red, just because of the size. Um, and, and there wasn't a lot of, excuse me, there wasn't a lot of storage in a lot of those rooms. And I understand that's a hundred-year-old building. It was designed at a different time, so.
I should have mentioned, excuse me, for, these guidelines are built, are based off of fifteen to twenty-five kids, the classroom. They have guidelines for larger schools, but these are all based off of fifteen to twenty-five. Um, so some of the, like cafeteria, I won't go through that. Glenn went through that. Security and supervision, it's the same, it's the same box. Main office, um, same box. We'll go to the science classrooms, and now we understand that you're doing a project there, but we evaluate it as it is. And so, again, the size, um, the size was way, it was way undersized, and there were no lab stations in there, which. We know the story and, and, but, uh, again, we just based it on, on what we, uh. What, what we saw now. And so they're looking for a science room to be twelve to fifteen hundred square feet. Um, teacher demonstration station, which there was, one of those, um, there was an eye-wash station, there was some of those things. Um, but the sheer size of it, um, really made it really tough. Tough classroom to have science in, so that was a red. Art, um, again, the size was. And I'm not sure if that was designed as an art room, I'm guessing not. It's just one of those things, again, it's an older building, you convert. You know, to what you need, right? Um, so that room was seven hundred and sixty-one square feet, and the recommendation is twelve hundred to fifteen hundred square feet. So it's, it's quite a bit smaller. It had some natural light, it had some counter space, but not a lot. Did have two sinks. And it did have some storage, so, um, but again, it's a classroom. I know how this works. I mean, you just do the best you can and, and you convert rooms that you need, so. But it, it was, it was, uh, did not meet the standards at all. So, um, the music room. Um, so, that's a pretty nice space, right? Um, but it, it falls short a little bit. For instrumental area. So it's. So it's eight hundred and eighteen seventy-five square feet, nice size room, which is in, within the guidelines for. For coral, but, um, they're looking for a little larger than that for instrumental. Um, the practice rooms, uh, we did get a little clarity on the storage issue. Um, we kind of were in the impression that there's a lack of storage, and Mr. Beta, kind of when we talked to. Felt it was maybe short, but it was adequate, and you know, and I don't know what your numbers are in high school band. Okay, so you have, you have a decent load. Um, the ceiling height was a little under what's recommended. Um. I don't believe there was a sink and fountain in there, which I don't know how important that is or not, but. Um, so that was a yellow, basically because of the size. Um, the two things that, I'd never seen those. I don't know what you call them. I call them like a soundproof booth. I thought that was pretty cool, actually, to be honest with you. I'd never seen that before. Um, so that, that was a positive. Um, the teacher-staff planning area, uh, was a big, it had to be a formal classroom, guessing, right? Um, so, been talking with the principals, and they felt like that was more inadequate, so that was. Um. That was an easy green, really, to be honest with you. It did have. Uh, had some natural light, had a fridge, microwave, and a coffee machine, so it was, it was very good, so.
Well, let me just ask if that, I know that's a big room, it's maybe a double-sized classroom. Is it, is it way oversized for what it's being used for now? Can we swap that with the math room that's grossly undersized?
Well, you know, I don't know how many, how many staff you have in high school. But I guess it's, it's that, less than fifteen, twenty, right? So.
But they shouldn't be spending all their time in there anyway. They're in their classrooms, or, you know, we're, we're not gonna all be in there at the same time.
Yeah, I, I imagine, I'm, I'm just guessing, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not part of your school, but it would be when they're on their prep time. You know, or before and after school.
But so.
So that room is nine hundred and twenty square feet, which is plenty, you know. That's, that's something that you, you might wanna think about. Um, breakout space, again, you wanna bring, let's see, you wanna bring all the seniors into one room? Or a, a group of stu-, a larger group of students to work with them, that there was no defined. Breakout space in talking with, um. Talking with Mr. Beta, sounds like use the music room or the commons, so forth, which. You know, you do what you gotta do, right? Um, but they're not dedicated areas for that, so that's why that would meet that standard. Um, the PE athletics and lockers, so, um, for a high school. Um, the recommendation is at least twelve thousand square feet, and your gym was eighty-five hundred. We had quite a bit of discussion on this, and I'll be honest with you, yes. Mr. Beta felt like, yes, it meets, meets the needs, but at the end of the day, did fall short of, of some of the recommendations. It did, it did not have a divider curtain. Um, again, I, I know the locker rooms. There's no handicaps accessibility and those kind of things. Um, one of the things that came out, we talked about earlier, was the, the whole stall issue, um. So anyway, um. Another thing which I felt was a negative was. Your, your athletic facilities are off-site, which, again, what are you gonna do? It is what it is, right? So, um, so that was kind of a negative, um. And then no outdoor PE space. Speak up on campus. You know, you have to, it's like Glenn talked about, you gotta go off-site if you wanna play soccer. You can't do it here, so. Um, site suitability, I guess Glenn already talked about that, um. The parking and bus drop-off, we talked about that. Technology, library, media center, again, we've already talked about that, those. The media center, that was a great space. The technology is, is no question. Is there? Um, special ed support area, support services area. Um. There, there was a bathroom down there, I believe, a student bathroom, um, but it wasn't handicap accessible. Again, there was no calming room. The space-wise was adequate. It, it was kind of, if I remember right, Anna, I know, I think it's been renovated, and it was just divided up.
Yes.
So, so it was a pretty good space, but it didn't meet, again, didn't have the calming room. Um. One thing that I noticed, I believe that in that area, they had the, uh. It's not life skills, is it? Life skills? Yeah, there's a life skills room, which I thought was pretty neat. Um, which a lot of places would love to have. Um, the auditorium, now, so this one we had a lot of. Um, so this is, I'll just give you my take on it, and, and I'm fairly new at this, and so. Um, I kind of approached, it doesn't meet the needs of your school, and. Brandon said, yeah, it does, it does. And I think Anna felt that way. And then we started saying, well, wait a minute. Let's look at, let's look at the guidelines and what, you know, space-wise, it's great. I've never seen a stage that large in my entire life, um, so you could do. Andy, get your gun on one side and, you know. Really could. Um, uh, there weren't any changing rooms, and Mr. Bay said, well, you know, they come dressed. Okay, that's fine, but it's a little bit of a negative. But at the end of the day, when you compare it. Um, it's a gym. It's not, it's not a performing arts center. And so, um, that's why I felt it was a yellow, and I know Glenn and I talked about it a lot. We talked with Anna about it, and. And I think she felt like, yeah, you're right. It, it doesn't meet that guideline. It's not, it's just a gym, but. Does it work? Yeah, it works. And is ninety-five percent of the Class B schools in their Dakota using their gym? They are, and that's just the way it is. But it doesn't, you know, it doesn't really meet, um, the guidelines. Um. Uh, we did go over to the current tech ed center, and, um. You know, for a building that was built that long ago, to have the foresight to make it that large, and the spaces I thought were tremendous. I mean, I. It, the one negative I would say, and I, I still think it's obviously a green, is the security is like, is non-existent. You just walk in the door. Um, so that's something that, you know, you might wanna consider, but other than that. I mean, that shop, my heavens, that was huge. And they had just, just, I don't know, a lot of forethought there. I mean, to. Create meeting space and some of those other things. So beautiful facility for something that was built, what, seventies, eighties, right? Something like that, yeah. Um, so anyway, that was an easy green. Um, and then the last one. Talking about the hallways, lockers, washrooms, again, I think Glenn kind of talked about that, but it's different at the high school. The hallways. Um, I, I measured these things twice, so I don't know, but I had two hallways that were ten feet and one that was nine. I don't know if that's right or not, but I, I, I looked at that and I, I measured them again, and it was, so, um. Anyway, that's, that's right at the minimum, um, the lockers, we've talked about forever. I think we know that's an issue, the washrooms, again, um, not handicap accessible, and there's no bathroom on the second floor. Do you know that? I didn't know that. We went, actually went back and looked, because I said that can't be in it, and that's true, there is not.
We had one staff member say that, that when someone wants to go to the bathroom, they all want to go down to the. Commons area or the gym area, because it takes longer to get down. I mean, he was very, very clear about where they want to go, that's where they want to go, down there, as opposed to trying to find whatever when they can.
Okay, so, questions, comments?
Just an interesting take, and Kirk hinted on the head with your current tech building. There was a person that wrote that, um, in the listing session, that they didn't think the kitchen was big enough over there.
Yeah. Well, we looked at each other, and we, I mean, we read the post, we were like, okay, and then we walked around, and I know we looked at each other like, really? I mean, that was, wow, yeah.
That's, that's a teaching space, that's not.
I know. Yeah, when, when we walked in there, though, that kitchen is. Much better than this. I said, they should move this kitchen or cook in this kitchen and all the meals or something, because it, it was. It was a beautiful scraps, some nice equipment in there and. Very nice facility, and you're so lucky, you know this, to have it in your town. So you don't, um, you know, like, where I, where I'm from, Grafton has it, so everybody busts his kids. And that's a lot of time, if first it's fifteen minutes, but it's no big deal, but it's still, you're, you're, you're wasting time on the bus. And some, some kids come from twenty-five, thirty months, you know, so you're, you're basically tying up half a day. And, uh, so anyway, you know all that, it's, it's a beautiful facility. Any other comments or questions on that? So, uh, so what we did then is created a slide that put them side by side. And give you an idea, um, we're obviously not going to go through them, but it kind of gives you an idea. Where you have similar concerns and similar strengths.
What you'll find, folks, and, and I'm certainly not predetermining anything you're going to do down the road, but what you'll find is that. You'll ultimately probably end up going back to like this slide, or you, either one of those individual ones, or the one that has the arrows. As you start to try to analyze what you want to do and what you think you want to do, and what's affordable and all those kinds of things. Because it starts to, at least gives you something to work off of, especially when you're, you're referencing it back to your staff and or community, for that matter. You can reference how it goes back and forth and where the commonalities lie.
When we get this, does it explain why they get the red?
Yes, we can get, we both had, the only reason why I'll put it, again, it, it just starts to, we have our notes, so you'll get. You'll, you'll get a copy that'll look just.
Spot each room, and then it also has the, yes, here's the guidelines, here's. You know, the measurements of all those rooms, or most of the rooms, and some of the concerns or the strengths, yeah, yeah.
And when you see abbreviation like NL, that's natural light, TV is tall, we call them tall boys as far as storage. Because when I'm taking the notes, I'm not trying, long, you know, write it out longhand, so, question them.
Um, a number sixteen here, I think the high school you had must have downgraded to a yellow, but that didn't get, didn't you?
Correct, didn't get corrected.
They changed that.
It wasn't, it was a yellow one.
Yeah.
You are correct.
Leave him by himself for a little while. What it really came down to, it's just not a performing arts. And it, it's not a bad space, but it's not a performing arts space, so it's not a green, it's not a red, it's gotta be the, yeah, I mean. And what Kirk said, relative to the space, the only thing I was, I was still wondering about, because the night we were in there. Our voices were echoing and the, and the people were sitting out, and, and I actually had a gentleman come up to me later. Um, and he, he commented that, that he couldn't hear Kirk as, as well, because he was so, he was soft spoken, we had hearing aids. But he sat on the far side, so I had to think in my head, well, if you had a, a performing arts thing going on. And you were a person of, of, you know, had, uh, hearing issues or whatever, if you aren't up in front, but you said that the. The sound systems are pretty good, so maybe it was just that.
Using them, right?
Yeah.
You know, at the end of the day, it's, I've been to a million concerts, plays, events. And ninety-nine percent of them are gyms, and it's a gym, you know, you're bouncing sound off concrete walls. And if you, if you go to a performing arts center, I'm sure some schools have them around here, it's a, it's night and day. I mean, you can stand on a stage in a performing arts center without a microphone, and we understand them. You did that in a gym, you wouldn't have chance, I mean, if it was a ways away, so.
Anything else? You know, we've kept you in this, we've got lots to go, we've got just one more, anything about any of this? Anything that you saw? So, what's the next steps from this? Of course, you have your, your June nineteenth board meeting, you're gonna see the demographic piece. And so Lori will be involved in that with applied insights, that who, who does the demographic component. On the twentieth, as far as that board meeting, you'll then see the other part of that puzzle, the facility piece. Uh, gentleman waiting, named by Mark, uh, Mark and Lori were here, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, I think, and they went through a lot of that. So you'll see that information on those two. On the sixteenth, Kirk and I will be back here, we're gonna present this exact same information back to the staff. During one of their staff development days, they're about two thirty that day, and then at five thirty, we're gonna present it to the community. And we told the community we'd be back, we just didn't know when, and so it's just a matter of getting the word out. We, we explained to them that it'll be one shot, so even if they were virtual, I mean, the best, we can make it virtual that night. To be honest with you, we can do them both at the same time, have a virtual going on at the same time we're doing the face to face, but we will be back. And give them the exact same information that you, you folks saw. Which is the whole, again, the start of the, trying to be the transparency component of this. And then in July slash August is when, and you'll be working with Lori on that, of course, you'll start to start talking about solutioning. What is it that you've got in your scope of ideas, and how does that fit with this information that you've gotten and financial pieces and so forth? So that's what you got out in front of you. Questions? It was good, it was fun, I mean, we had, we had great input, and obviously, there was a lot of, a lot of it was, was pretty upbeat. Nobody was in there whining or whatever, you know, that kind of, because sometimes you get a little bit of that, and it just wasn't that. It was, it was, uh, it was fun, it was fairly normal. I can say it that way, again, I guess just because I've done this enough times, it was pretty normal, from what we, not what we heard. But some of the reactions of some folks along the way, and your community groups, I, I'll say again, they're, they were off the chart, they were good. That was actually a lot of fun, there was a little bit of, you know. But that's okay, I mean, that's all right, it, it wasn't our first rodeo, so we can, we can deal with that, but it was good, they were active, I know that. We had a lot of posted notes, and we were, I went, I, that, I, I drew the short straw, so I had to go through those on the post notes. I had post notes laying all over the floor at my house, I'll see, these two are like, and then, yeah, it was it, but they, they wrote a lot of stuff, so it was all good. Anything for us?
Well, one thing I wanted to be sure of was that the community didn't get the idea that the board just, is, we're gonna build a new school.
Right, right.
That's not where I think we are.
Yeah.
But of course, I, I have heard that three or four times already, right away, when the meetings are going on. But to, can you assure us, uh, give us some history of ICS, your experience? What, how many, you've been in business how many years, and every single school that you worked with built a new school, right? Wrong.
Wrong.
So that's. Just once, just once.
Badly overstated. Yeah. And it, it's, it's, uh, uh, again, I don't, I don't know that it makes this okay, but that's not uncommon. That's the first thing everybody's worried about, and they're worried about, are we gonna lose that, you know, that, that historical compete? I mean, I, I've been in some of the older schools where they'll literally have a gym that they will not touch. Because it's got so much history, but you could just as well let it fall down, because it's not. In fact, when I went to Redville, you ever seen the movie Hoosiers? They have a gym just like that. I walked in the gym and I looked around and the, and the bleachers were this high up, and the, and the lines were right here, and I looked, I thought, my god, this is right out of Hoosier. But you, everything we did down there, you were never gonna touch that gym, which is fine, I mean, you know, it just worked, but, you know what I mean? So you have all those different pieces, um, but no, new schools don't oftentimes pop up very often, no.
And I, I didn't really get the sense at the community meeting, nobody really brought that subject up, to be honest with you.
Yeah. But they, they had the, the, I will call it the normal concern, transparency, communication. Um, don't overspend, you know, all those things that, that are right, I mean, there's nothing wrong with it, but that was their normal concerns. And, and, um, so I think as you guys go through this process, you just have to keep your ducks in a row. Make sure you, you're pretty systematic with whatever you do, whatever you decide to do. Um, and that each, each step you take, you're communicating back with folks, um, through it. Through whatever means, you do it websites or whatever.
That's the other question I have, and I've had it many times since I've been on the board, I wrote down communicate, because that's a word you brought up. So I've often felt like we do a great job of pushing out information, we put out information in the paper, in the newsletter, or you stupid. And the app, the Facebook page, Twitter, all, every way you can imagine. It's the getting the information back from people, and, and even when we do get information back. Feeling like they're validated, that they, they've been heard, no, that doesn't mean they get the answer they want. But we need to make sure that they feel and they were heard.
I would be shocked if, if, whatever you, again, I have no idea what you're gonna do, and I'm not predeterminating anything. But I'd be very shocked that as you go through the process, you're gonna have either small groups or individuals. The only thing they're looking at is, how's it affect you? That's it, there are, or how's it affect my kid, and so that will be the rub that comes along, and how you are able to. To validate and, and morph all of that together to make some sense and keep everybody thinking of the big picture, as opposed to. That area or this area, or whatever that is, and, and that's the, that's the trouble, and it always is, it's almost every school that I've been on. But, uh, to communicate, you'll be fine.
But I, I think what you said. That's, that's every school.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a, there's a group of people out there that unless you walk up to their door, ring their doorbell. Tell them everything, they're, they're gonna be unhappy with it, that's a very common concern complaint, you know. Because, I mean, I've seen schools that they do everything, all they've got, all the things you talked about and then some, and it's just like, people like. You need to communicate more, you know, COVID forced everybody to up their game with that, right? And I think most schools have maintained that, I, I, I would say that's very common, sure.
All right, if no more questions, let's take about a five or eight minute recess. Uh, before we get into the rest of this, thank you much.
Yeah, you bet, thank you.
Good work, thank you. Daniel, do you want to go next?
Thank you. He has to be at the July meeting. Administration does not think that's necessary, and if they don't think it's necessary. I don't think there's anything wrong with what we've done, right?
They had an election, right? I didn't count, no.
There was like fifty something. Don't worry, you're off, you didn't get written yet. But, but there might be fifty, uh, actually, yeah.
You never know.
We had fifty kids for vacation by the school. Good, yeah, I'm tired. Ah, that's really good.
There's that last name, Daniel, do you need the?
Well, I suppose yours is Apple, that can be all.
Yeah, you can airplane it up there, do you want airplane? Do you have Apple? Yeah.
No, I have Windows.
Oh, yeah, mine is, um, she sent it to me, though, I could share.
Okay, yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. We'll get that up and running here. I was gonna say, you know, when we're leaving, I'm like, oh, offers. I'm sure it is, I, I felt badly, I just, there's nobody else to close.
We do have lights, and, uh, we're going to move up the, um, audit presentation, which is item one, C one. We'll have that right now.
I'm gonna try to get this pointed up.
If it's up, that's fine, if not, I mean, it's, it's forty-five pages, not everyone's gonna read the whole thing, I know that, so. Um, you know, honestly, some of it, it's just a matter of just referring to points, so, uh. You know, I, I kind of start on when I get this presentation of, uh, you know, what is an audit, what are we all kind of looking for, everyone kind of hears the word, um. Sound bad most of the time when you go through it, but mostly on a governmental accounting staff, it's just. Us kind of going through the records and making sure that the financial statements, information given us, that we agree, there's no material. Um, statements that, and everything that's presented to us, that we've kind of gone through and done our work on the financials, that. Essentially, your balance sheet, your income statement, that, uh, that we agree, we don't think there's anything that needs to materially be adjusted, so, uh. In the audit report, unmodifying, any highest opinion that you can receive, so that's us, you know, essentially taking the records from the old school. Uh, starting with April, and then Shannon here, that, uh, and then we are back to twenty twenty and twenty-one, there's been some odd issues. Everyone's kind of probably aware of all the different things that went on, so this is twenty twenty-one, uh, that we, thought the records looked good. There are just very minor adjustments, little property tax, uh, in a wrong fund, but it was like five thousand dollars somewhere there, just. Very small minor things that, uh, you know, nothing I'm concerned, so, uh, highest out of things for this you can get. Uh, then, you know, just explain a little bit more what we do in an audit. Uh, we always start with just internal control testing, making sure, uh, biggest probably thing of. Uh, money leaving the school, that it has a home and a home that it's supposed to be going for. Uh, dual signature, dual signatures on checks, uh, making sure that the invoice of the check, vendors matched, you know, just kind of some of those procedures. Uh, you probably noted in other prior audit reports at the very end, that there's always a couple findings that, uh, for Stella for the last audit that was done. And then our firm, two of the same, uh, findings that, in a typical school district you're assigned, there's always gonna be a lack of segregation duties. Uh, you know, even all the way up to the Watton School District, uh, they do have a lack of segregation duties too, it's essentially. When you afford to hire two business managers, no, you know, so even those small class A and E schools, like a Watton, you know. Fargo schools, they probably have a separation, but we're just talking about sizes, that you always will have a segregation duties, and it's on, you know. Dual signatures, board approval, just kind of board oversight, generally, you're compensating control of making sure that everyone's. Kind of paying attention to those bills that are coming through, uh, and then, you know, kind of afterward, testing those internal controls, or more look at some. Uh, the, you know, revenues from county sources, state sources, federal sources, verifying with those outside entities that give the school money. If they said they sent two million, three million, however many dollars that they sent to school. The old school's counting for those records, the cash that is in the account, the banker account that's reconciled. Uh, outstanding checks, making sure that all the math kind of flows through the different various years. Uh, and then capital assets too, of, you know, kind of making a record of, you know, major improvements, buses, vehicles, all those kind of things too, so. Uh, then after that, we kind of come up to our report, uh, you know, in the report two, we did a little bit of adjusting from Purcell's records, uh, in the capital assets. The old iPads, old desks, they get stuck in some of these depreciation schedules that aren't adjusted, for just kind of cleaning some of that stuff up. Uh, and then in the past, they had used an accrual basis of accounting, most of the records that we saw here were cash basis, and for the sake of just kind of trying to get you guys caught up. Cash basis is acceptable, and just doing the two-year audits, we're gonna stay with cash basis, just, and most reports that you use aboard see our full. Cash basis anyways, money in, money out. cash basis anyways, money in, money out. So until we're probably the, you know, we're twenty twenty and then twenty or nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and then twenty twenty-one school year. And then we'll be going back to, uh, some of your, the twenty-two and the twenty-three school year that'll end here soon. Uh, for that double audit, and then you guys will be back more, uh, current, instead of doing a one-year audit. And then at that point, I'd probably recommend going back doing full accrual financial statements, just so you can kinda see, you know, uh, I mean, there's just the difference of timing on cash basis versus accrual of grants, et cetera. That's kind of all the money you've already spent, or if I wait for DPI always at the end of the year, send it by. So, uh, uh, then two and twenty-one, some of the COVID that's everyone's touched on, we went over a single audit threshold before. There's probably never been a single audit in the history of the old school. Uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal dollars came into the old school in twenty-one. That triggers an additional type of audit of just the federal programs, uh, essentially the COVID funds, uh, so they're really just the COVID funds that we selected major audits that we have to essentially go back on those internal controls, make sure a whole fifty-page staff worksheet that you guys are following in the federal government kinda went through, you know, specified those COVID funds, following all that and then reporting back to federal government and doing that single lot. And I believe that's the case for twenty-two, maybe twenty-three. I don't know if that's quite dealt there yet, but I believe twenty-two was a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar year or two and.
Did they just change the threshold though, going forward?
So that that the two million dollar threshold, that's just a state threshold. This single lot is just on seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars federal funds. Uh, so I believe twenty-two is, I'm not sure, and twenty-three, but, uh, if they both are, we'll do two single outs again coming up on the school year ends. If it's just one, we'll just do the one again and we'll get everything caught up. So, uh, that two million dollars that you referenced, the state, uh, two million dollars of gross receipts, you don't need an audit. I think you guys will probably already know about with DPI, tax revenue, et cetera. Just kind of smaller, really smaller schools, smaller cities could be out of audit, so. Other than that, I mean, there's transition, kind of the business manager spot, there's a lot going on during the COVID times. These are kind of some wilder audits, if you just wanna say an audit is wild and exciting, but. Uh, but in general, I would stress that, uh, you know, my time working with April, uh, she was very thorough, had the books in place, and then Shannon taking over, it's kind of a wild ride going from here, I'm saying, well, I've been an accountant, but private accounting, the governmental accounting, and, uh, you know, I think that you're doing a good job in just our conversation of how would she go about doing some things, or just, you know, just minor changes in how she would like to do it, that I I've seen a lot of she's heard, so.
Do you do private as well as governmental?
Yep, I do. Hence the delay of this.
Okay, so this is our two-year audit for years ending twenty and twenty-one. So where are we on twenty-two and twenty-three? Have we have we engaged you yet, or is that?
I don't believe so. I was, you guys probably wanna have us come back again, so.
Yeah, we probably have to vote on all that. Yeah. So at what timing? I I mean, this, then you'll do two years again, so our fiscal year will end in three weeks and uh, then when do do we not start that whole process until about next January? Can we start it as early as?
We, I, you know, a lot of this, I mean, kinda goes back to like uh, for selling, like, you mean, you guys were in a different position of having Purcell retire. There had been a lot of the Harold Rotanas that had gone back and the state found out, they thought it's probably not the part, and we're gonna throw away six years' audits. You guys are probably a couple of years ahead where I'm getting done with some like eighteen, nineteen audits, trying to talk back to people on oh, you remember that check in nineteen, or you remember that happened in nineteen, the business manager's gone four years? So, I mean, there's just been kind of a backlog of some of this stuff, and then the COVID on, single audits and uh, you know, but the people that need single audits, like the old school, I'm trying to get those done because the federal government would like to see that sooner than later, but there really is no, I don't think I've never seen anyone get penalized for not having a single audit done on time, so. But.
Okay, so.
I would, I would like to, you know, probably start this fall and hopefully get something, maybe you can get done by December here yet, so.
And we'll be taking that up at a future meeting. It's required and the timing is right, we'll get done. All right, thank you. Any questions? Any questions? If not, again, thank you, and, um, we'll be hearing, you'll be hearing from us again soon, I I assume, and, um, why did you get sit in on that whole?
I learned a lot. I learned a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so back to the agenda. We are at, uh, four regular meetings. A, committee meetings and reports. We've got one A done. Uh, B, chiller update. I believe this is where we are.
Yeah. Um, Dave is here cuz he's gonna, we're gonna kind of break this to you, Jen. Um, so our chiller was broken down as day seven and eight, right? Our chiller was broken down before graduation.
The tower.
The tower.
We kept the parts of the tower. That's what, that's what held us up. Prior to graduation, I think we had, I think we got those parts in, we were up and running like the day before school got and then first for graduation, so that was good. But and then everything was running just great. Like, probably as good as it's ever, as it's ever around, and it was just working really, really good. And Wednesday, week ago, it went down. And it gave us a low, low oil pressure light, which, that's not good. And I think Reed did, Reed was around there, no one stood and listened. It it was making a erratic noise that we, neither of us had ever heard before. And he called Dyken. That's who services our chiller. We've got a contract with him and talked to the guy there and told him kinda what happened, and he suggested starting up again. He uses, we did, well, then it started making those kind of noises. And that's when we got the low oil pressure, the low oil light, and it it shut down on someone. And so then we just didn't start up any, it's like, see if they could come and assess it. Well, they were supposed to come on Monday, they didn't make it. They came all of them a couple of times, just kind of, I wanted to have some information for this meeting, and they were able to get here today. And they sent a guy out that's not probably their top individual for, like, this little chiller, they're they're these aren't necessarily that common, the age of them, and so there's some people that are a little familiar with them. But this guy came and he was on the phone with them and checked some things, stuck some he ended up putting five gallons of oil, which in the years that I've been here, we've never put that much oil in, put that much in today. Thirty ten, it'd start up, it would lose. It would, it would start its warm-up cycle, and then it'd just lose the oil and shut down. So after phone calls and and, uh, he was on the phone with his advisors, um, basically comes down to it's, they think there's a valve in there. Well, what they ended up deciding is they think the seal went out, I think it's on high higher RPM, something or other, and the seal went out. That's what boils down. It boils down to, we're gonna probably need to tear it down to find out for sure what's wrong. Otherwise, you're shooting in the dark, of course, and that will be well, they gotta pull all the cooling off or the they gotta pull all that out of there, which is about a two-day job. Then about another three days, that tear it down and find the issues, and then you look at it, decide what all you need. And if you decide to rebuild it, at that point, you're tore down to where you're gonna rebuild everything in there that that's gonna need it, cuz you're you're essentially all tore down. And it'd be about another week, provided we have parts, get it back. And that's just kind of a general rule. So on with that, I guess, that's kind of where we're at on that, dude.
That all costs a hundred bucks, right?
Yeah.
I think it was gonna be five hundred. It's gonna be a few hours. The thing to think about. They have a, they have a brand-new chiller on the floor there, but service, we won, and I don't have prices. They was there was supposed to be a guy that was gonna get us quotes on a new, new chiller on the price of basically rebuilding this one. And I think even possibly switching over to, like, if we were gonna go away from from the old chiller and on to, I really don't even know, there's something sitting outside, which would be you know, he was gonna give us some of those prices, just some, he would have something to think about. He never got back to us today. He thought he would have that today, so. That's kind of where we're at on the chiller. They have a, they went sitting on the bar for the chiller. They have a new one. We just ordered a new a heat pump over there, and they said October, we're really good. They, he kinda said that too, they have six to nine months as a average time, right? Oh, he said, they could hook up a temporary out here and pipe it outside and just set it out there. I better not say whatever.
Would you, do you expect to have more information when we meet again in ten days or something?
So what, um, we decided, when making the practice, I told him to go ahead and ask Tim, is his name, he's gonna come tomorrow to tear it apart, because we don't know until they tear it apart. Now, the last one we went back, it was five years ago. It was thirty-six thousand dollars.
Was it five years?
Yes, it was two thousand nine, we went in two thousand eighteen, yeah. So, yeah.
But we were able to have the insurance.
Oh.
And it got paid. But we didn't know all this, like, a year later, it turned to.
Oh, yeah. That's right. Maybe though, it was on the board. And why is that insurance?
Cuz we got that building insurance that April brought to us.
But so, uh, that, so that was five years ago. It's thirty-six thousand dollars. I did talk to Lori from ICS and just said, I gotta tell you, we've got some new information. What's happening, you know, as you guys are going through your assessment. And, um, we are guessing a quarter more to figure for the cost if we have to rebuild it, but she said, Anna, we're finding this year in one year, it's about twenty percent, but things are going up just in a year. So she said, I don't think twenty-five percent is going to be enough. She said, I'm just gonna tell you right now. So she's she's gonna start looking through some numbers, and I sent her all the information from the last fix. She's gonna go through that and, um, kind of give us some information on that, you know, as they're starting to move forward. She said, the number one thing is, when they come to do their presentation, is obviously your facilities, she said, are we know our HVAC, you know, it's all those pieces that are gonna be on the forefront. We know that there's problems coming up at that, so their plan will be around that. But anyways, where we're at now, they, I I believe Reed said something about five hundred thousand for that chiller that's sitting on there. Was he on my leg or was he serious? Because I just felt vomited into garbage when he said, I'm like, I don't, yeah.
See, when I got on the board, our company used to say that, you know, that chiller's gonna go. And at that point, he was talking about two hundred and fifty to three thousand, three hundred, that's eleven years ago, so I I'm not.
I believe he did say five hundred.
Yeah, I, I think I remember that number, so.
Is that way to give them individual, I mean, it's just the chiller. It's not gonna change any HVAC. They're not gonna be able to adjust the rooms. It's just, just a chiller, not the system, the whole.
That's another thing I just sort of throw out there. I asked him, like, as far as, like, the controls for that chiller we got back there. Cuz they're, well, I think five years ago, and Tim was there working on it. He said, do you have any issues with this? You cannot get parts for it. So we got this, that could go down too, and I, he said, those are expensive. And it's like, well, what's expensive? Cuz it's slightly different for him than me. Anyways, he goes probably fifteen to eighteen thousand just to the controls. So, I don't, it's just just stuff to think about.
So if we get this new chiller, are there parts for this new chiller, or you're saying there are no parts for our old chiller?
He thinks he's, he thinks parts are available for this. And I think he told me to set up a temporary out there, like, for the summer. I thought it was gonna be like sixty grand. That may be easier. Dude, I go, just for the summer, he was, yeah. So, and they rented them over there about, I think they're like ten to fifteen thousand a month.
Yeah.
I think what we're at now is we're just waiting for Tim to come, right, Dave? He'll be here in the morning. It'll probably take him all up tomorrow. Part of the date Friday. I'm hoping it gets done by Friday, if not Monday. That's not right? That's what, that's what, um, Reed told me. He's coming in the morning to start tearing it apart. Then we'll have more of an idea, and then he'll give us some options. Um, so we might have to have a facilities meeting or a special board meeting. I, I'm, right, yeah, I know. You know, um, unless you want to, I I'm not really sure if you want me to, cuz isn't there like a twenty-five thousand dollar threshold where I can make that decision? Are you wanting to give me the ability to, if they say they're gonna fix it for, you know, it's fifty thousand dollars, do we rebuild it? Um, I guess that that's some guidance that I would probably need from you guys, or do you wanna be part of that? And I trust, um, David Reed, I, and this guy, Tim, he says it's very good.
So it got rebuilt five years ago?
We got parts, or it's, yeah, it broke down five years.
Would it just be repaired?
Eighteen to nine, I believe, at like four rings. I think it was like major. Like, not a lot of major parts got put into it. This guy thinks that's how much it costs.
Yeah.
But if it's a five hundred thousand dollar item, thirty.
And we're gonna build.
It's still six, seven percent. A new purchase. I think it's just.
I know, that that's like, I was, talking to Reed, it reminded me of a family that has a car, right, that needs repairs. Okay, yeah, would it make more economical sense to buy a new car? But if you can't afford that car, you need to just fix your car, right? So I don't know what, I don't know what the right answer is, because five hundred thousand dollars right now is not in our.
You're asking for an efficiency rating on, like, how much you would spend, how much you would save per year from this old, you need a new one.
This case, it's gonna give us that, because there is a considerable, right? And then he's, he did say on the new ones, there's, sort of, rebates.
Actually, Lori is working on that for us. She is figuring, you know, with that part of our package, she'll be looking at those options, and they will look and talk about what some rebates are and the savings that are in it, you know, and it could be as much as the the item cost, the savings might be. So she is going to do, um, will have her kind of help on us too, and.
Well, what do you need from us tonight then? Do you, I guess, say you'll get more information and we can have a special meeting?
Yeah.
Should we do? Before the nineteen?
I I would think it would be, once these.
Probably have a special meeting just via Zoom, but.
Yeah.
And that would be the only thing on the agenda.
Let's just meet every week.
Yeah.
Morning, Emily. We would think if we were known for our, next, the beginning of next week, don't you think, Dave, when Tim tears into it? And I'll just kinda keep in contact with you guys, and then we can decide what we.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Um, okay, the next. Um, so the next thing on the facilities is the science floor update. You saw the very, you know, involved in committee meeting minutes, and then, um, Ryan keeps minutes every time that we have a meeting. So if you guys see the pictures, uh, they're making great progress. I think they're like right on time, um, and maybe even ahead of time. Probably shouldn't say that, but things have been going really well. No problems, right, Dave? In fact, I didn't even know they were up there the other day. They started doing their jobs.
It's been going pretty good, actually. Right on schedule or handoff.
Yeah.
Hasn't really been any issues.
How big of a crew is it?
Four. Yeah, six guys, they had it, but I think it must be less now, cuz I just don't, maybe there's six of them up there. They just. Yeah, six guys. They had it, but I think it must be less now because I just don't, maybe there's six of them up there. They just, I don't even hear. So we did. They. The money or what they thought, because there was a change order because you can see how the, um, Joyce that they're budding up against. Are actually wider or longer or whatever, deeper than what the original ones were. So then that made up that gap or part of that gap. So. Um, that changer, they, they're still gonna have to use some of the materials that they ordered, right? But not as much as they had originally. Oh, so it's actually, yeah. So if you want to take a story, you can later on. I'm more getting rid of the. Yeah, I tried to sell it, but. They, it's ten years old and if it's. They, they said once, ten years is a pretty long life. I don't know if people are gonna want to buy it. That.
Science, yeah. It was all good in that.
Well, it's a two thousand three or, I'm sorry, twenty years. It has a three model, twenty years, yeah. Yeah, it's pretty old. It's pretty old. So I just told them to dispose of it.
Any questions? Um, June first committee meeting minutes were in the packet. So if there are. Further information and rights. And if no, if no changes, they will remain. As. Presented. Leadership PD Committee.
The minutes are in there too, um, and let's see who's which committee. Me, yeah, I'm excited. Um, we went over, um, the professional learning, the calendar and then, um, the new plans in there for you. If there's no. Nobody has any input on it. We, we changed the wording to professional learning and I'd like to change the. Uh, policy when we get to that, just because to stay in my vocabulary of use. Yeah, so. For professional learns.
All right. And so no action to be taken there?
Nope.
Okay, curriculum.
Uh, the curriculum, um, meeting minutes are in there and, um. Uh, Robert, Monica and Robert are on that one. Robert was in the field at that time, so he wasn't able to be there. I, we had a lot of conversation about. Um, the new, the calendar, you know, for deciding on resources and, um. I don't know, we, we just kind of, Monica said, if you need those resources, we're dedicated to getting the resources that we need. So. I, anything that I missed on that?
I think it is accurate that you agreed that you need to meet more than once a year.
Yeah, so we're gonna meet again in the fall. I already set up that dates. We can talk about it, so.
Questions on the curriculum committee report? How about technology?
And this one, Mr. Engel thinks really good notes. He does. So there's a lot in there. Um, like I said, um. You guys will be setting the fees at the next month's meeting, so you may wanna, um, look at that part on insurance because we have had. Kids that. Are, there's breakage for the kids multiple times. So they're paying the same insurance and then there's. They, it just gets replaced. So the technology committee would like to do kind of a tiered system of, um, in. Of insurance. So if I make, if I have a breakage, the next year my insurance is gonna go up, you know, just like if your car, you wreck your car, your insurance goes up. Um, so we, they would like to do that. So. That might, that'll be part of the fees for next month that you may wanna look at that and. Think about. How you wanna do that? The five-year technology plan is gonna be coming up. We've gotta come up with a, a plan. About teaching computer science or cybersecurity. So according to the House bill, which Larry talked about that. Um, you can have a plan that teaches and integrates. Of cybersecurity throughout the curriculum during the daytime. Or and, and or you can have a computer science class in the high school. I hope we have a computer science class in the high school. We need more technology in the high school, just. Seeing what's coming up for our kids. So we need to focus on our computer science stuff, so. Um, Ryan Steiner is gonna be teaching computer science next year in the high school. Yeah. Liz did it this year, but it's not really, that's not related to me, but right.
And the meeting minutes are there and. Changes will be accepted if they are. So then we'll move on to policy. Um, this cell has posed changes to the professional D G G A. Which is it called professional learning now or is it called?
Called professional development. I would just like to change it to professional learning plan and I gave you my reasons for that. So I just highlighted everywhere where it's development and changing it to learning.
Uh, so. And hopefully we all.
Yeah, I didn't do any other.
Okay, so in our guidance document, uh, there is. Need to amend policy D G G A on first re- reading as written and be presented for adoption at the next regular board meeting. Is there a motion to, uh, approve the first reading of the G G A? Motion. I'm but mixed motion printed in green. Is there any discussion?
Okay, make sure that's.
Okay, wait a minute. Started laughing and I didn't get it all. Nagel, okay.
That would be me.
We should never have. Um, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Uh, the voice call is okay on these?
First readings, yes.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Of the post say no. Motion passes. They also have a proposed first reading of certified leave D D A F and there is a one-line addition. Uh, which ties in with our change to the negotiated agreement, which defines emergency leave and all that. Yes. I would welcome a motion to amend policy D D A F on set up. Oh, this is second reading.
Yeah, we need to do it again just because of that change.
With amendments as written.
With the motion.
Okay, so it is a second reading, but, but we're not doing a final adoption because there is a change.
Yes.
Thor, no. And then it'd be presented for final adoption at the next regular board meeting.
Sure, but she was.
Is there a second? Thank you. Uh, day seconds. All right, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Of the post say no. Houses. We'll both be. For final adoption next. Seven minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, we've already taken care of C one.
Do you have to accept? Did you accept the audit?
No.
Do we have to accept it?
Oh, you're right. Oh, why are you slowly?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to, uh, accept the audit for twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one?
Should we read it first or not?
I'll make a motion. Nagel hopes to approve the, the audit on like twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one. Is there a second? Uh, I'm but seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? I would just say, I think we're, we're thankful, fortunate that we got Jules' standards.
Yeah.
But not lose them. And don't. How much are we spending on?
Oh, well, this one we settled.
Yeah, well, it was five or six thousand, but still, I thought it could be more.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Of the post say no. Motion pass. Um. The A D M report and why did I have written on my? Cause I, I wrote delete, but should I have written that by the consolidated?
Yeah, the consolidated.
Okay, so the A D M report was in our pocket. Okay, so can I explain what we're looking at?
Yeah, so this is, I, I don't manipulate these numbers. This is just any stars. So you can see our total A D M for the year. So that's average, um, daily membership. It's forty-five point seven and average daily attendance is four hundred and sixty-three point eight four.
When do we get three thirty?
Eighty, yeah. It used to be eighty-eight, so when people were absent, right? Then it added effective, but it's eighty and this one for payers. So, yes.
That's us. That it was, it used to be like five hundred four or something.
Yes. But or.
I saw four sixty, that's really heavy.
So what was our A D M last?
Uh, five oh three, but that's including P. Cause this one, this one doesn't include her. Oh, it does have a D in there. Five oh three, yeah, but I knew we were gonna be down, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the. District pupil membership summary report?
Yeah.
The A D M report, is there a motion to approve? Okay. Nagel hopes to approve the A D M report. Is there a second? Day second, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, of the post say no. Motion.
Here we did have oh three. I did have, um, title one authorized representative. We can do this another month. We can do it in July. We'll become a new board. Cause I still am a title one authorized representative, so. We'll push that to next.
We will skip then, uh, the title one authorized representative. Uh, skipping number, uh, the consolidated report, which is not available to be. Cleared yet. So we'll move on to item five, twenty-two, twenty-three, transportation reports.
So this is, thanks to Dave doing all of this information. He, um, got me all of this stuff and Shannon's been keeping really good records. So this was a pretty easy. Report to do. So this is our final transportation. What will be reimbursed? So just one thing to know. Any of our kids that are open and roll, they are not being reimbursed for. And we go out of our district wide a ways for a couple of our kids. But we could not find the documentation that. You have said that you're gonna do transportation to a couple of those open and roll families that are quite a ways. We might have to make some decisions depending on bus drivers, things like that. So we are reimbursed for ride time. So the riders, like the kids count and we get reimbursed. It's not a lot of money. We're not getting mileage for one, one that's about thirty miles. Yeah. So, um, we may have to make those decisions when it comes, but we'll just leave it. This is our mileage for this.
And would you think you'll be bringing that information to us for decisions?
Well, Dave and I are probably July, end of July, it'll probably be, we're gonna look at our bus routes and what we got for bus drivers and we're just gonna have to see, cause. Uh, yeah. We're. I, I have enough bus drivers to run all six of our routes.
Could Judy win the drive? Oh, Judy.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so the transportation report is in front of you. Um, is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three transportation report? I'm but moves to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three transportation report. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Thor, second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, of the post say no. Motion passes. Then on to bicycle handbook, yes.
I guess I know. You guys. So what's in them? Did you have questions? Did you?
So my only question and that's in both of them. Okay, so when we were talking about those directives. Are we allowed to set a deadline?
Yes, okay, so great question. Brandon did talk to the state because we were getting directives like. When testing started or the day after, as soon as a child found out, oh, hey, I don't have to test. And then parents were calling. He found out, yes. We can't, we can set a deadline. So that's why they decided to set a deadline because they go through all of the setting up the testing and make sure there's accommodations and they've got the kids in the right rooms and then a parent, um. Comes in, does a parental directive. Yeah, that was a great question. Yeah. Yes, he did.
Okay, I think I had asked a couple of questions and you answered and then you suggested if, if people had other questions or if people had questions, they should reach out to those principals because they would have more information.
Yes, and I think wherever you did that, right?
Yeah, I just asked. The attendance that I brought up to you guys last year. Ten days if they lose. Credit the daughter's situation on. That's her. The shows that she does for. All of the, or shows are. Kind of a use.
And why was your question answered?
Uh, he did not get back to me yet. He said he was gonna, I just wanted to. Bring it. Ahead of time to everybody to know. It had never, has been a problem. It just, I wanted to.
Um. All right. Any other questions?
We know that the lunches will be updated, but that'll be after these sets fees in July, so.
You know, would you mind if we just, uh, act on all three of the handbooks in a single motion? Is there anybody, does anybody have to act rather than having three different motions?
Single high school. Anybody have any questions about any of the other? The changes? Okay, yeah, I don't, I think that that's okay.
If, if anyone, uh, is opposed and wants to pull one or one or both of them, all of us, um, there's no opposition. I just didn't take them. Single motion for all three handbooks, highest fifth, elementary, next place. And it's just a free shooting. Is there a motion to approve the high school, the elementary and the activities handbook as a first reading? Nagel makes that motion. Is there a second? Second. I'm but seconds. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Anna, could you share your thoughts about? What we will do with these now after a first reading? I suggested that they be. Made fairly public so that we could get. Be transparent and get feedback. And I said, if you think that's a good idea, because I wasn't convinced, but you did some discussion and thought about.
So right away, I'll tell you it. No, 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 because most of this stuff is on. Law and policy, but yet we hear all the time how we don't ask people's, people's feedback, you know, and there might be something in here that. Isn't based on law and there might be somebody that has some really good feedback and thoughts on it, you know, and so. Talked to Jordan, talked to Greg and it was funny because they were the same reaction and they went, no, maybe we should just do this. So we're gonna put this out on the website, the three handbooks. Reece is gonna put it out there and we'll leave it out there until, um, our next month's meeting. And then, you know, yeah, there might be some feedback that we can't act on because it's law or policy, but then there might be something that makes us. Be positive and think about like, maybe we should try that, so.
And do you expect us to act on this on, either June nineteenth or not until July?
I don't think you'll do it because we won't have fees or anything like that. So, yeah, that's not okay. And then it'll give more time if you have questions or we can get more feedback and people will give us time to kind of. Digest it in the principal's soup, so. That's not okay.
Right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Uh, ayes. Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item nine, staffing, resignations, we need to take action on. Yeah, that's what we presented this packet or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One oh one oh sevens.
Okay, yeah, okay. Uh, we have a resignation letter from Canada doctor, um. Who has completed her first year with us and has resigned from her position as ten through twelve English teacher. Uh, is there a motion to? Prove that. Resignation. Keep motion. Dave moves to approve the resignation of. Canada doctor and was there not something else I was, we were supposed to add to our motion?
No, she, I don't, she didn't.
Is that the end of the? Well, if this is outside of her contract. If, if she had submitted it in. March. We would want to add language effective at the end of her contract. That's something that just popped in my head.
Technically, I don't think she would have had to write it, but when, a couple of years ago, when we had that problem, I feel. I feel it's just best that we get resignations from people, so make sure.
Um, so we have a motion and a second, so. Is there a second?
Second.
Thor, second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. You wanna probably say no. Motion pass. What do we have?
Okay, I, I did an update on it. So here's our open positions. We have a second grade position. We did interview, um. We're waiting to hear back. High school English is open. We have got four special ed pairs open. That's higher than a special ed unit, but it's just a. That's higher than a specialized unit, but it's just, we have a high school specialized teacher that's open. We will have a lunch clerk, but we'll hire that in July. Um, our coaching openings are junior high football. That's an opening left by Mr. Lynch. Junior high volleyball. That's an opening left by Mrs. Miller. Junior high, oh, JV volleyball.
Junior high volleyball would be Shelby B.
Yes, JV volleyball is Miller. Junior high boys basketball is Mr. Beta and JV junior high track is Pepe. Those are openings. I don't think I missed any. So.
So you, you offered the second grade.
Uh, I don't know where Greg is at on there. There were some things that we were working out. Oh, and I'm sure you saw that we are advertising for, I'm a custodian.
Yeah.
So we had advertised for the bus maintenance and we just weren't getting what we wanted and be quite honest, if we didn't get a full-time person that can handle it, Dave's workload was not going to decrease anyway. So Dave has kindly agreed to stay as the bus and transportation person. And then we are going to hire, and he's still gonna be the supervisor over the maintenance, but we are going to move Bobby um, Conodal up to Reed's position. He's gonna be doing more of the operations um, and maintenance piece of it. And then we're gonna hire a new custodian for in the elementary. So that's what we advertised for. Did I say that right? Hoping that we get another, we are hoping that might be a little easier position to fill.
Yes. We're getting.
We aren't getting anything, so we had to do something because it was something that, I mean, at bus drive, that has to be done. Like, and, and somebody's gotta be there to do that. So Dave, like I said, kindly said, he would do that because that needs to be filled. And then the custodian will go through our darnedest stuff.
That no change is just, uh, using to do maintenance here more in regions.
Four specialized paras are open. How many in total are?
Uh, nine. Yeah, we have five specialized pairs right now.
So what does Steph versus new position entail?
Oh, that's a really good question. So she's, okay, she was a para and she's a fully a teacher, but she's going to school to be a teacher. So she's called a technician. So it's kind of in between. Right? There's certain things like she won't be able to do. I don't believe she can write an I E T by herself or, I mean, there's certain things that until she gets, you know, a certain amount of schooling. So she will be, um, a teacher, a, a specialized teacher, but she just doesn't have all the qualifications that, yeah.
I don't know. I assumed, but.
There's so many programs out there now for pairs, become teachers that are paid for. It's a, it's just amazing, um, the money that's out there because we obviously are short teachers. We're seeing it in everything that we do. It's just not enough.
Alright, so there is no action to be taken on the old positions, but just keep working at it. Alright, uh, next item ten is an open enrollment request. Uh, we have in our packet, a open enrollment application from a, um, student who lives in the Ellendale district and will be starting kindergarten in the fall. Um, typically the deadline for open enrollment applications is back in February, but because this student is only just enrolling in kindergarten, administration has been advised that an open enrollment application is fine at this time. If it wasn't, we would simply be doing a tuition agreement and that would change. It would, we would just do an open enrollment next.
Anything that I asked, if we could do this, we will provide transportation, right? But if we could approve it without us providing transportation, you know, unless we have a bus going to that area, that will help us out because this is important. But if we don't wanna get in a situation where we say, yep, we're gonna provide transportation and we're not getting reimbursed for it. And also if it's so far out of our district, we just don't have the ability to get them.
Most of the, I thought all of them did that. Years and then beyond providing transportation.
Uh, no.
I don't remember ever.
I think they all said that.
They say approved, but they say don't they say with their, don't we have to mark the box?
So a lot of what we've been doing lately has been non-tuition agreements and on there it says specifically, we'll pay the admitting district will provide transportation or the, and we have done at the admitting district that we would do. But at that time, you got paid reimbursed for it. So why wouldn't you do it, right? And at that time, we were not in a crunch for bus drivers, but and we will provide the bus until we can't. And, but I just don't want the district to be tied to, well, you have to do this, cause they only fill us out once.
Okay, so what motion are you seeking? I, I move to approve the open enrollment application. Um. We don't, we, we don't say it alone.
Um, I would say, um, you make a motion to approve the open enrollment out application without providing transportation.
Without providing transportation ever, or are we?
Maybe just, and we'll work with families.
Give, give me the, you, give us the line.
I would just say without transportation being provided by this.
Alright, is there a motion regarding this open enrollment application?
I have a question. What would it cost to, you know, if you asked them if they wanted to pay for transportation, what would it cost a parent or family per month for that?
It would be different. I, I would assume we would charge depending on the mileage reimbursement that we're giving off. And, uh, one of our students, I know that the mileage reimbursement is fairly close to the student payment that we're getting for that child.
Which is?
About ten thousand.
Ten thousand, it's not just the local share.
It's amazing. It ends up being like nine thousand dollars. And David and I figured out, you know, much we're giving up and fuel and it was shocking when we figured it out how much it is.
In, in the case of this student, this, this person works here in the district.
He works here.
Not be bothered by his employees. And do we already send a bus to that area? And there's probably another student not very far away.
And you know, fortune's just such a mangled mess. Like this person's not in ours. This one is, this one's not, you know, so we have to look really close to it. And I talked to other school districts that absolutely do not provide transportation to open enrolls. School districts that say, if they're within one or two miles of our district. You know, a lot of them will just set a point at their district and because they'll get reimbursed and then they have to meet him at that point, you know, they bring their kids to us. So.
So this sounds like a topic for a board retreat as well, transportation, not just.
Yeah.
But transportation overall, yeah. But by the time we get to a street or retreat, uh, we're gonna have to have some assistance. Anyway, I have, um, do I have a motion?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion regarding this opening moment application?
Without providing transportation.
You can't make a motion.
No, I know, but I'm saying that's what you wanted. That's what she wanted. The verbage and greens.
Robert or makes the motion that.
She wasn't ready this time. Oh, she's the verbage and green.
Okay. We just cannot have evening meetings. Is there a second? I want seconds. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Alright. Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes.
Get so much the evening meetings, it's going on three hour evening.
Okay, so the, the rest of the agenda is in packet number two, pages one hundred and nine through one.
Reorder.
Where you are.
You're too big. Be read through everyone.
Uh, okay. I did read. I did come up with a question.
Oh, wow.
I remember the question about the, uh, technology.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so anyway, the, the next item is twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four teaching contracts. And these contracts are all the new contracts which have been rewritten for our staff with the new terms of our negotiated agreements. And so even though that we just hired this spring, who previously signed a contract based on the old agreement have a new contract in here based on our new charter. So I'm seeking a motion. I move to accept and approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four teaching contracts for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four certified staff. Is there such a motion?
So maybe there was.
Heinbeck moves to approve, accept and approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four teaching contracts. Is there a second?
I'll second one of the questions. We're also including the admin contracts. So should not the option reflect that?
I thought we've, did we approve the admin contracts or just the pack, the there in the back of the compensation. So we probably do need, yes. Um, let's, with, uh, Heinbeck, would you agree to add the words, um, and administrative? Okay. And would you second that motion?
Yeah.
Good call. Right? Would you agree?
Yeah, we had that conversation. So we, we're all certified, right? But you're right, cause it says teaching contract.
Okay, and is Larry in here? There he is. Shannon is.
I don't think.
Yeah.
Oh, then I.
Sure you. On their alphabet of all, right?
Yeah.
Alright, Kelly. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes. Uh, we've already taken care of item twelve, the Hall of Fame reduction approval. Uh, we did add item thirteen, election board number K. They all graciously worked yesterday. Election board. Uh, Shannon, can you give us the background on the history on what we have?
From what I can tell, the prior, as far back as I could go and whatever descriptions they have on sex, they have been paid ten dollars per hour from the time they get here and they take their, their old, the time they count and they leave. And, um, I have seen, I had seen some stuff coming through the listserv. Some of them were paying seven dollars, some of them were paying ten. Most of them paid for, um, lunch and that type of thing, but that has nothing to do with the wages. So, um, I think ten was a very across the board number.
Is there a motion with regard to election everything? A motion, may the workers ten dollars per hour. May go move to pay the election workers ten dollars per hour. Is there a second? Day seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes. We've reached a great point in the meeting, the items for future agenda.
No, there's a better point coming up.
It just keeps getting better from here.
So I included, it's the fee schedule. If you'll maybe look through it and think about it. And then, um, I gave you the kitchen board report because Jer, I asked her to go through and check on meals and make sure. And, um, we've done some digging and uh, people are gonna hate us, adults are, but we're not, we don't get reimbursed for any adult meals. So we're falling behind on. So maybe just think about that and think about the fees. I know that Robin wants to raise activity fees. Um, and I think that's in the handbook, so that, but just maybe look these over and have an idea. Maybe this is a good thing to talk about at a retreat, too.
Well, yeah, we're not gonna be able to have a retreat before the July.
No.
I did some checking with, um, uh, uh, there was some stuff going on the listserv. I can send this on. I didn't, I I needed to tweak it, but, um, we, according to the other schools, some of the other schools that responded, we are behind in the adult lunch. Um, the kids lunch, it was hit and miss. Um, but I did talk to DPI or Child Nutrition. They said on raising prices, if your hot lunch was zero or positive at the end of the school or had one dollar in it or more at the end of the last fiscal year. So June thirty, twenty-two, we were in the black. We did not have to transfer funds into the hot lunch program. We can do whatever we want as far as raising price. If our hot lunch had been in the negative and we had to transfer from the general fund to make it zero, we had to do this, uh, what's the, we have to fill out the form that Jared did. And then we can still do what we want, but we have to show that we actually did the form to figure out where we were and what. But they said there really is nothing in century code that says we can only raise it by a certain percentage or so much. She said that the only thing that it does say is that the highest student lunch probably, the adult has to be eighty-five cents higher than that. Which we.
At least.
At least eighty-five. That's the mid. It has to be eighty-five.
It doesn't have to be eighty-five cents.
No, at least eighty-five cents higher than the highest student lunch.
So Jared has given us some recommendations and we're not acting on this now. Just for, it is what you're saying and what she's saying are in agreement, right? He's suggesting we should increase the, the adult price to four dollars at least.
Where are we gonna end up this year? Before.
Oh, man.
Before, we were always negative. We didn't get paid for them. We didn't raise them. We will only raise them up by ten cents after a three-year break and nothing.
So some stu-, schools have a difference between lunch adult or lunch teachers and lunch guests. I think that would be kind of a just kind of a pain, but there are T G U, which we thought was Tappan. They're at five dollars. Wymer is that adult guest is five dollars. Self Prairies four. Bowman is five. V C N is four and East Fairview, which is the Dora is five.
So how many non-teaching adult guests do we get?
I have no idea.
Oh, I mean, if it's tornado burger day, I'm there. Yeah.
I, I don't think it's, we don't keep track.
But I think you were asking, where are we gonna end up with our lunch count? Are we gonna be in the red?
Yes.
Five.
Oh, that I don't know. I haven't done these stuff yet, but I.
Uh, one, at one point, right before the end of school, we had over ten, or not over, we were almost ten thousand dollars in lunches account owed.
So that was just lunches account. Oh, the whole lunch fund, the hot lunch fund. I, I last number I wanna say was around the forty to fifty.
And that was, would have been through April?
Correct.
Which is not out of line with what it was.
I know, which is shocking. I was, I've been. Yeah.
Hot lunch never carried this long.
Yeah, and which I did not did that. No, I knew activities of the hot lunch is freaking else's.
Okay, so we just need to get this up.
Right, no.
Okay, um, preliminary budget will be coming up. I C S presentation will be will do one of those.
Yep, the demographics will be, that'll be next. And then, yeah.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Our next meeting will be Monday, June nineteenth. We would like to go at seven A M. Monica's giving.
I will be in there for you.
So.
No, I mean, I, I will be, I will be the ram and it will be next by eight thirty.
But we, we're required by law.
On that date, on that day.
So shall we? Well, we'll do it at seven A M. And if you can join us, at that point, join. Um, and then after that, our July meeting, we're talking about July twentieth because Mrs. Del is going to be out of the country. Uh, and by the way, Mrs. Del will be, you'll be joining us remotely on the nineteenth?
Yeah, I, yeah, okay. Six A M. In the door. Well, you don't have to close the bar.
Yeah, okay, no.
Okay. Okay, so that's what we got. And as we talked about earlier, you know, in the past, we have our, our July meetings has been two separate meetings. One is the closeout of the old meeting, the old school year. Our, our July meetings has been two separate meetings. One is the closeout of the old meeting, the old school year. And then. We adjourn and see the new board members and take their deals of office. And start the new school year. This is what we have done as long as I've been on the board, but this is not done everywhere and it's not really necessary. So. Unless someone wants to continue doing it that way.
Uh, Robert.
Robert.
I'll buy the.
So, um, so Robert's last. Well, depending on the special meeting. And we're considering that the Monday, the nineteenth as a regular meeting, even though it's the second meeting of the month, because it's regular business and that gives us the flexibility to change our agenda. Special meeting, if it's necessary, will be a special meeting and there will be. That's around the agenda. With that, um. I'll declare the meeting adjourned at nine twenty-two.